Not the address.
Hi, Jerry.
I would like to, I think it's time we call to order the May 7th meeting of the Planning Commission of the City of Santa Monica. It's now a little after 6 o'clock. So we'll start with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have a roll call?
Commissioner Chaco.
Present.
Commissioner Fresco.
Here.
Commissioner Lambert.
Here.
Commissioner Landris.
Here.
Commissioner Hamilton.
Here.
Commissioner Reese.
Here.
And Chair Tolkien.
Here. I didn't hear us.
Can we get the planning director's report?
At your next Plan Commission meeting on May 21st is canceled. And then your next regular meeting will be on June the 4th, which is a study session on the airport conversion project, the three scenarios, a hearing on a text amendment at 2668 Second Street, along with the associated conditional use permits, and then also the commission's recommendation on adult-use cannabis. July the 8th, or sorry, July the 2nd is anticipated to be your election of officers. So that's the annual rotation of the Planning Commission. On the Architecture Review Board, some recent actions that happened in April were the approval of projects at 1645th Street, 1437 Sixth and 3102 Third Street. I will note that the design approval at 1437 Sixth Street was appealed and will be coming to the Planning Commission for the appeal of the ARB approval. And then coming, or excuse me, this past Monday was a very short ARB meeting to approve the design for a project at 1036 22nd Street. On the Landmarks Commission agenda, coming up at their May 12th meeting, excuse me, is a hearing for designation of a structure at 137 Hart Avenue, and then also 226 Palisades, that's the Statement of Official Action Designating that property as a landmark. Then on the June 9th meeting, that is 308 Alta, as a new hearing for a landmark designation. Recent City Council actions for the April 8th meeting, the City Council received the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report for year-end, June 30th, 2024. They also approved a final map for 1230 Ashland Avenue, which is one, which is an SB 9 project. And then they approved an RFP to award to CBRE, the sort of a broker contract to sell 1632 to 45th Street, which is otherwise known as the Apple Building property over by the metro station. On April 22nd, the council heard the promenade entertainment zone, which is the establishment of an open container or the ability to consume alcohol in public spaces on the promenade if it's purchased from a licensed business, that item, we received direction from council to actually turn that more into a daily activation or a more regular activation. So that actually will be coming back to council at their May 13th meeting. And then the council also extended and ratified proclamations of an emergency for homelessness and also the regional fires. They also gave direction to extend for a further 60 days the relaxation on rules associated with alcohol service for restaurants. So things like the number of TV screens and number of, you know, other, other rules that were relaxed in light of the fires emergency, those are now extended, I believe till the end of June, right? When council has to act again to extend the emergency order. And then just to give you an update on economic recovery efforts, the internal staff Economic Development Task Force has fully launched, along with a number of committees focusing on different areas such as special events, marketing and branding, process improvements, things like that, capital infrastructure. So that work is underway in terms of focusing on areas that can support the city's economic recovery. And also, Armani has kicked off the City Council Subcommittee for Economic Development. So all of these major efforts are underway in order to focus on recovery efforts, economic recovery efforts for the city. And then the city budget process is ongoing. So the council will have their study session at their second meeting in May, you know, that where they will be giving direction on the next biannual budget and anticipated for adoption at their second meeting in June. So that completes the director's report. I'm happy to answer questions.
I'm not sure this is properly addressed to you, but given all that's going on in DC regarding housing assistance and sort of other local funding programs, the city has a lobbyist in DC, right? Or not?
Do we have a federal lobbyist to me? Yes, we do.
I assume that person's working on our behalf.
Yes.
On those programs.
Yes. It doesn't necessarily touch the work that community development does, but certainly for our Housing and Humanities Department, they're monitoring the status of, you know, federal funding for housing, obviously.
Thank you.
And what Santa Monica's source of funds for its tenant base and project-based vouchers, does that come directly from the federal government?
I don't know the precise answer to that, but I can find out for you. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. It would, maybe this is an information item for another time, but if we're getting, if we're losing grants, it would be helpful to know what we're losing. There's no other way to put that because everybody's, everybody everywhere is losing everything all at once. And it would just, you know, we get funding for everything from crossing guards to safe streets to other infrastructure funding. It would be, I think, would be useful for us to really know what, what's happening.
Yeah, I know that we have city staff that are monitoring that. To the extent that there is some information available, we will, of course, share that with the commission.
Okay. Thanks.
One more. I heard from people in the audience that moving the item, what is it, 11A, is that Mesa? La Mesa?
La Mesa.
The house, the waiver and the variance?
It's coming next.
It's coming next. Okay. Thank you.
I have an announcement for the audience. If you want to speak about an item, you have to submit a chip to the Secretary of the Commission prior to that item's being considered by us. So please do that. Please write as legibly as you can because sometimes it's hard to read the names.
Chair, may I? Sam, can I make a motion?
I haven't announced.
Wait, before you do that.
Yeah, well, let's.
Thank you. Chair, I'd like to move that we move item 11A to the consent calendar. Sam's second. Okay. Can we do that by voice vote?
Yes, you can. All those in favor of moving item 11A to the consent calendar, say aye.
Aye.
None? Okay.
Now, I guess I have an announcement. I've been reminded that my term as Planning Commissioner ends in June 30th, and I will not be seeking another term. I turn 87 in August, and I have other things I think I need to take care of, even though I'm genetically, my family lives into the 90s, I still think I should do other, some other things. Thank you. And thank you all for your help when I needed it. All right.
Happy, we're happy to help and we wish you well in your other endeavors.
What?
I said I'm happy to help. I'm happy we were able to help and we wish you well in your other endeavors.
I'm sorry, did you say this was your last meeting?
What?
Did you say this was going to be your last? You're not going to?
No, it's not my last, my last meeting. It's just.
You made a decision.
It ended in June, and they asked me whether I wanted, I said I'd be around if they didn't appoint anybody. I have a feeling that's going to happen quickly.
All right. We weren't, I just wasn't prepared for you to say.
I just want to thank you for your camaraderie as the only other hearing impaired person on the, on the commission. And, and also, check out Viking Cruises.
I already have. Thank you. All right. Where are we? Now we have public input. Forthcoming chair and?
No?
No. The only public input I have is Jerry Rubin.
Thank you very, very much, Jerry Rubin, longtime Santa Monica resident. I'm a member of the Santa Monica Urban Forest Task Force, but I'm just speaking for myself. And boy, you know, Chair Tolkien, you're such a cool guy. And you don't look 87. I just, I'm 81 myself, but.
Well, I don't feel 87 most of the time.
You could come and hang out at my sticker table anytime. Be great, great conversation. He did a lot of good. He still will. I'm here to say I will be reapplying for another term on the Urban Forest Task Force. I can't believe the two years went by that fast. I thought it was only one year and they had to remind me. No, it's been two years. So our next meeting is coming up. And the whole landscape department of Santa Monica, you should be very proud of them and the work that they're doing, especially after the fires and the winds. I want to wish everyone a happy Mother's Day. And I want to also, probably doesn't need reminding, to take care of Mother Earth. And we need to do that every day. So when we're thinking about Mother's Day, remember to honor, respect, and love Mother Earth and Mother Nature. And every time I come to these meetings, I think, what a great city we have. Same goes for the City Council meeting. And you're doing a great job and keep up the good work.
The next item on the agenda is the consent calendar. The commission, any of the commissions want to pull any of the items?
I'll move. But we need to do ex parte.
We should do ex parte because of, you moved the hearing item to the consent calendar.
Ex parte.
Ex parte on item 11A.
I'll jump, I'll jump in. The applicant sent me an email requesting a meeting, which we deferred pending the staff report. I read the staff report and we didn't meet.
I, I don't know how to do this, but I wasn't here at all on March 19th, nor was I in any condition to watch the meeting. So I don't know if I should not vote or just, that's enough to say.
We're allowed to vote on minutes.
Okay, cool. No problem.
I have no ex parte on what was 11A.
For 1923 La Mesa, I met with the applicant group on Tuesday morning, was it Tuesday? And walked around the property mostly because I just wanted to understand what was changing and what wasn't. Also, I just have a question. I just noticed I didn't bring that page of my notes by mistake, but in one of those minutes, Ralph Metzer's name is like horrifically misspelled many times. So do we need to figure out which one it is and pull it in order to correct that? Or can we just correct it?
I think you can just make that as part of your motion. And we will certainly search for that.
It was dramatic, or I wouldn't have.
I don't know if this qualifies for an ex parte, but I was invited to a meeting for the La Mesa property and I declined. Not yet. We need to move it. Yeah.
Okay.
Chair, I'll move the consent calendar with the, with the correction of Ralph Metzer's, the spelling of Ralph Metzer's name and any other scrivener's errors that may be identified in the future.
Motion by Landris, seconded by Reese. And so all those in favor of the consent calendar, say aye.
Aye.
I think the next thing is item 11A.
No, 7, 8A.
Seven.
Santa Monica Boulevard Safety Study.
Leslie, I'm moving it along. Be proud of me. You want to go back and hear the?
Well, good evening, commissioners. Thank you for having me here. My name is Carlos Hernandez. I'm a transportation planner with the Mobility Division, about 10 months into the role. So this is my first big presentation. Really happy to be giving it here. I'm going to provide an update on the Santa Monica Boulevard Safety Study. And this safety study is a comprehensive analysis of Santa Monica Boulevard where we want to understand crash patterns and identify safety improvements for the street. This project came about because of past safety studies that identified Santa Monica Boulevard as a priority street and as a street with a history of crashes. So in 2015, the city adopted a Vision Zero policy and Santa Monica Boulevard floats to the top in terms of priority. In 2019, the city adopted a local roadway safety plan where we looked at different intersections throughout the city. And Santa Monica Boulevard had key intersections with crash history as well. This study is funded through a Caltrans grant and it will be completed early next year. And we're working with a consultant team to develop a set of recommendations, which will be included in a final plan, and will go to City Council for approval again early 2026. So these are the key components of the project. Since October, our project team has been working to understand how the corridor functions today. And we've completed a safety analysis and looked at the last 10 years of crash data on Santa Monica Boulevard. We've also engaged with the community and we've captured those observations and experiences and really filled those voids in the data. And combining these efforts, our team is recommending enhancements for every intersection on Santa Monica Boulevard to improve safety and to connect people to destinations on the street. So we're all familiar, I'm sure, with Santa Monica Boulevard. I'll go over the project area. We're going to study the full extent. So it's 2.4 miles long from Ocean Avenue to Centella Avenue. And we know Santa Monica Boulevard is a critical east-west corridor in the city. And it does have some distinct segments. On the western end of the street, we have our downtown with high pedestrian foot traffic and a lot of small businesses and restaurants, as well as some anchor institutions. YMCA is there, the public main branch library is there. From Lincoln Boulevard to around 20th Street, this is known as our auto row. So we do have a high number of auto dealerships and service stations in this area. We do have two key destinations on the corridor that includes Providence St. John's Health Center and McKinley Elementary School. So this just sees a lot of trips. And then the segment from Chelsea Avenue to Centella Avenue, this is a mix of small businesses and some recent mixed-use development projects as well. So just as the corridor has different destinations, and it looks and feels different as you travel it, Santa Monica Boulevard is narrower and has slower vehicle speeds in the downtown area. So both the profile of the street and the documented speeds, they actually increase as you travel eastbound, as you can see in this graphic. As I mentioned, our team recently completed a safety analysis of Santa Monica Boulevard. And we examined, again, the last 10 years of crash data, and we retrieved that information from our police department. And this data shows that there's been over 800 crashes in these last 10 years on Santa Monica Boulevard. More than half of these have resulted in some, in sort of injury. The other half were reported as property damage only, and these are typically self-reported crashes. Of the 435 injury crashes, 30 of these have been severe injuries, and we've only seen one fatality occur on Santa Monica Boulevard. That was in 2018. When looking at who is impacted by crashes, we know that young people and older adults, they're most impacted on Santa Monica Boulevard. Young people are overrepresented in crashes when compared to the city's population in this age group. So this is looking at the 16 to 25-year age group. And then we dug a little deeper, and we know that older adults make a large percentage of pedestrian crashes specifically, when compared to their age group throughout the city. So we looked a little bit closer at the modes and who's impacted in these crashes. And we know that 81% of all the crashes include vehicles. But when you look at serious injuries, those numbers shift. You know that, we know that 29% of serious injury crashes involve pedestrians. And 26% of those serious injury crashes involve bikes or scooters. So active modes are disproportionately overrepresented in severe and fatal crashes on Santa Monica Boulevard. And focusing our safety improvements on these modes can help save lives. So these heat maps illustrate where crashes are happening along Santa Monica Boulevard. The top map shows all the crashes documented. So you see some areas of concentration. But the bottom map, that's where we look at the injury crashes. And we have smaller concentrations, but somewhere around 14th Street, 16th, 20th, 26th Street, and a few others. Of the 34 intersections in the project area, 20 of these are signalized. 14 of them have two-way stops on the side streets. And through the safety analysis, we found that crashes occur most frequently at signalized intersections, but injury severity is higher at unsignalized intersections. Right-of-way violations are the primary cause of crashes, which means one party made an error, crashed into another party by not yielding to their right-of-way. For crashes just involving vehicles, we know that the most common crash scenario involves two vehicles proceeding straight, which are typical broadside or T-bone crashes. For pedestrians, the main proceeding movement for crashes includes a vehicle making a left turn into a pedestrian crossing at an intersection. And for bicyclists, the most common proceeding movement involves a vehicle making a right turn, a left turn, or proceeding straight, all while the bicycle was proceeding straight. So there are other factors that contribute to crashes. We know that unsafe speed is the second primary collision factor, although it is an assessment of many contextual factors. And a police officer has to account for these factors when determining that there was unsafe speed at a crash zone. So the safety analysis really gives a historic view of crashes. And community feedback has been essential, especially for, again, filling those gaps in the data and understanding the community's experiences and their desires for Santa Monica Boulevard. So I want to talk a little bit about some of the engagement events we've had. And we kicked them off during Halloween of last year. We had an exercise called Light Up the Night, and we hosted it at the main public library. Our team installed these two interactive displays. And participants were able to show up and do a dot-voting exercise to vote for their sort of priorities for Santa Monica Boulevard, as well as place comments on a map of areas where they find sort of difficulties crossing or getting through that intersection. And that was community touch point number one. The second touch point we hosted was a walk audit, and this was in partnership with Providence St. John's, where we had 20 residents help us observe the corridor and document the behaviors of people driving, walking, and taking transit on the corridor. Throughout the engagement process, we've been collecting online feedback. So this is for folks that can't make in-person events. They were encouraged to leave an online comment using a social pinpoint mapping website that we hosted on our project website. And people can drop comments for particular intersections and let us know some of the near misses that they've experienced. The final community touch point, that's going to be a open house-style meeting. We're planning it at the moment. So we'll host that later this summer, where we will showcase some of the initial recommendations to the public. So overall, results from the engagement events and our online map shows that residents want safer crossings for people walking. They want drivers to make safer vehicle movements. And people feel that vehicle speeds are too high. Those are the top three things that we heard in our engagement events. We also had some comments related to transit and transit improvements. So that led us to further investigate transit improvements as part of this project, even though it's focused on safety. Other ways we've been getting the word out about the project includes, we mailed out 10,000 postcards for residents and businesses within half a mile of Santa Monica Boulevard. We, Kyle and I actually went door-knocking on the, to all the businesses on Santa Monica Boulevard, and were able to even tape the project flyer to some of their windows, obviously with their consent. And we've also leveraged our social media channels to promote the project and our project website as well. And the city's Take the Friendly Road newsletter, which goes out to hundreds of people. And lately, we presented to three neighborhood associations. And our next presentation is to City Council for, through a study session, and that's scheduled for June 10th. Now, I'd like to go over some of the proposed recommendations we have so far. This is not a complete list, but the recommendations are applicable in concept, and they have proven safety results. So first, I want to summarize some of our findings from the safety analysis and the community feedback events. And based off our work so far, we know that crashes occur most frequently at signalized intersections, but injury severity is higher at the unsignalized intersections. We know pedestrians are overrepresented in serious injury crashes. And we know that safer pedestrian crossings and safer vehicle movements is what we keep hearing that the community wants. So these findings have shaped some of our recommendations, but we also gained insight from doing field observations and understanding land use and destinations on the corridor. For example, St. John's Health Center is a major destination, so you have a lot of workers and commuters going there at all times of the day. McKinley Elementary School, obviously during the peak hours. We've also hosted field observations with the technical advisory committee. So this is advisory committee that's made of city staff, so that includes police, fire, public works, and our transportation departments. And we similarly went out to the street and walked the full corridor and documented sort of what's happening there. So these four sources of information you see here, they've led us to a set of recommendations that could be organized into sort of three categories. Systemic improvements, hotspot intersection improvements, and transit improvements. I'll stop, I'll talk about systemic improvements first, and this includes low-cost solutions that can be applied throughout the corridor. This includes just making sure pavement markings and signage are consistent throughout the corridor. Ensuring that we have adequate bicycle crossing through the intersections. Leading pedestrian intervals, which give pedestrians a head start at a signalized intersection, allow them to walk before any traffic proceeds. We are also doing some traffic operations analysis and we'll have some signal timing coordination take place from 20th Street to 26th Street. This is shown as sort of the most congested part of Santa Monica Boulevard. And we are also recommending right turn only from side streets at unsignalized intersections. So right turns only from side streets, they minimize turning movements for vehicles and therefore minimize conflicts with other modes. We propose this treatment, as I mentioned, at unsignalized intersections. And the data shows that the through movements and the left turns at these two-way stop-controlled side streets, they're minimal. They represent around 1 or 2% of all the traffic at a particular intersection, entering that intersection. So these are the 13 locations where we're recommending the right turn only restriction from those side streets. As you can see, they're all located within one block of a traffic signal. So to minimize disruption in commuting patterns, people can make their left turns or their through movements at those signalized intersections. Now, the next category is hotspot intersections. And hotspot intersections are unique in the corridor in that they either have a unique crash history or geometric conditions, they're near an important destination, or we've heard a lot of community input. So the safety audit is, safety study is going to develop concept plans for 15 of these hotspot locations and address their specific and unique concern. Today, I'm going to show you five of these locations. We haven't developed all 15 yet, but these five can be applied to other intersections throughout the corridor, so this is going to give you a good example of what we're talking about. The first one is Sixth Street, so this is an intersection in our downtown. Recommendations are to include a pedestrian scramble. If you're familiar with some crosswalks in the downtown area, they allow you to cross diagonally as a pedestrian. Pairing this with the no right turn on red restriction for vehicles, it basically separates the movements between people crossing the street and cars entering the intersection. So those two movements are completely separate. That application can be done at other intersections, including Fifth Street and Seventh Street. And we did hear some community feedback around potential application at 20th Street. So this is near the medical center. And we do believe that this warrants further study, especially tie into our traffic operations analysis, to make sure that there's no congestion issues with introducing a new phase. And these are the locations, again, where there are existing pedestrian scrambles and where we propose new pedestrian scrambles. The next hotspot intersection is 10th Street. So the recommendations here are to add a new crosswalk. There is no crosswalk existing at 10th Street at the moment. So we propose adding a crosswalk with flashing beacons, as well as curb extensions. You may be familiar with curb extensions. They do help shorten the crossing distance and the profile of the street and just create more visibility for pedestrians. This paired with the right turn only from the side streets restriction, that would minimize the turning movements and the potential conflicts at this particular intersection. So other intersections that don't currently have a crosswalk where we can apply this include 12th Street, 19th Street, Chelsea, Harvard, Stanford, and Franklin. As you can see here, the locations in orange are those new crosswalks. And that pink circle at Chelsea, we did get plenty of community feedback. And we are further investigating this for a potential pedestrian signal or a full traffic signal. So that's part of the ongoing work. At 11th Street, the recommendations here include bicycle markings across the intersection. So this is an intersection that has a full signal and bike lanes that drop before the intersection. So we do want to extend that and again, have bicyclists continue through the intersection. That bike across the intersection, that treatment can be applied to 14th Street and Yale Street as well, again, to connect bicyclists north and south across Santa Monica Boulevard. And we also have, as you can see in those arrows, a far-side bus stop relocation. It essentially moves the bus stop from before the intersection to after the intersection. And that helps with overall visibility with pedestrians crossing at the crosswalk and making sure that they're just visible overall. It's a proven sort of safety approach that's done in most instances. And we have a few locations on Santa Monica Boulevard where we propose that. In terms of the, again, proposed bikeway crossing improvements, they're located here. And we're not proposing bike lanes on Santa Monica Boulevard itself. It's not part of the bicycle network. We're instead focusing, again, on getting cyclists across Santa Monica Boulevard and connecting them to the existing bike network. As you can see, we have bike lanes on Arizona and one block to the north and on Broadway, one block to the south. The next hotspot location is 18th Street. There's an existing marked crosswalk at this intersection, so we recommend adding curb extensions, again, to shorten that crossing distance and to increase visibility. And including that right turn only from side streets to minimize those turning movement conflicts. Similar intersections that currently have marked crosswalks that could use that turn restriction and the curb extensions include 9th Street, Euclid Street, 15th, 16th, and Princeton Streets. And those are indicated here. It's the orange dots with the sort of tiger stripes. And the last hotspot intersection I'll showcase today includes Stanford Street. So this is further to the east of the corridor. The recommendations here include a new crosswalk with a flashing beacon. And here, we are recommending a pedestrian refuge island. So this is a space in the middle of the street where pedestrians can cross either in two stages or do it in one stage, but it does shorten that crossing distance and that time exposed to traffic. Introducing a pedestrian refuge island in the center of the street does restrict turning movements. So in this case, the westbound turning lane is removed in lieu of that pedestrian refuge island. And we also looked at recent counts that we took as part of this project. We know that left turns from Santa Monica Boulevard account for around 1 or 2% of the vehicle movements at the intersection during peak hours. So there are very few vehicles making those left turns in certain cases, but it's something where we still want to investigate. Pairing this with the right turn only from side streets prohibition, again, allows for fewer conflict opportunities. Similar intersections where this can apply include Princeton, Harvard, and Franklin Street. And again, these are the streets further on the eastern end of the corridor, as you can see here. In yellow, it's the, the circles to the right. We wanted to make sure that we recommend these in the street, in this part of the street with the widest profile where the pet refuge islands can fit. We also know that there is a potential study for bus-only lanes on this corridor. We want to make sure that whatever we recommend here isn't in conflict with what bus-only lanes could look like as they travel on a curbside condition. In short, these are the 15 hotspot locations that we've recommended, again, with unique conditions that warrant some sort of concept plan. Now, we want to complete the first drafts of these concepts and take them to our big community open house this summer. And today, we showed you five, but those are sort of the, the types of safety improvements that we're thinking about for the other 10. Now, the third category, transit improvements. We did get a lot of community feedback, again, from, from the events in terms of transit improvements. I did mention the far-side bus stop relocation. For those bus stops that can't move to the far-side location because of a large driveway, sometimes there's a gas station or a fast food restaurant and you can't have the bus stop at the far-side location, we are looking at queue jumps. So this allows the bus to sort of bypass traffic at intersections so that they can get sort of a rolling head start and get in front of any traffic at the intersection. So these are the locations. Again, very few far-side relocation opportunities, but where we did see them, we definitely are recommending them. And then the two queue jumps where we cannot move the bus stop to a far-side location. So this safety study focuses on safety improvements on Santa Monica Boulevard. But we've had a lot of comments about, again, transit enhancements. And we know that there's a separate study being led by the West Side Cities Council of Governments to analyze transit enhancements on several corridors in the West Side region, one of which is for Santa Monica Boulevard. So that paired with the community feedback has led us to include a cursory level of analysis for transit operations in this safety study. So we want to ensure ultimately that this study focuses on safety, but that it also supports future, future transit planning efforts. So to that end, we wanted to see what a transit, what transit priority lanes could look like on this corridor in a way that minimizes impacts. And we took the widest street profile, again, on the eastern end of the segment. And we looked at the existing conditions. Currently, we have one turn lane down the middle, we have two drive lanes in each direction and parking on either side. So given this geometry and the wide profile of the street, we put together just a quick mock-up of what peak hour bus-only lanes could look like. As you can see, that turn lane in some cases is a pet refuge, as I mentioned earlier in the slides. The two drive lanes are maintained and the parking lane can transform into a bus-only lane during those peak hour times. So geometrically, this is, we know, what we know can fit. For this potential bus-only lane segment, as you can see here, I think it's important to understand the profile of the street and how we fit a 12 or 13-foot bus lane. And considering the existing street widths, they're best suited on the east end of the corridor to have peak hour bus-only lanes. So continuing bus-only lanes further west will require further study and ongoing traffic analysis, and we hope that the Council of Government study will look further into this. So we've done a lot of the investigation for this project. We've studied the street, we've looked at the existing conditions, we looked at crash history and analyzed some crash patterns. And we've obviously talked with the community and will continue to engage with them during our open house meeting. Our next steps include a presentation to our city council on June 10th, so it'll be a similar presentation to this one, and receive feedback in preparation for our big community open house. After that, we will get back to our desks and put this plan together and make revisions to those concept plans, and then come back to city council early next year for adoption. So with that, thank you for your time and I'm happy to field any questions.
I have, I have one question. Is this basically the same process that was followed for the Wilshire Boulevard improvements?
Yes.
So the community outreach and all that is basically the same?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Landry?
Yeah. I hesitate to ask a question that is more research than research, but I do want to, I do want to ask it. I've drive up and down Yale quite a bit. And I have seen and heard about, also from my wife who drives up and down Yale, about various accidents, collisions at north-south. So the starting question is, when you're calculate, when you're determining that something is a, is a collision at an intersection, it doesn't matter whether it was east-west or north-south, right? You're counting everything in that.
Right.
Okay.
In that vicinity.
That's helpful. So we are on the way to banning a right turn from Colorado eastbound to Yale northbound through the safety improvements that are happening at Colorado and Stewart, which is going to put a limitation on a major north-south corridor for the city on its eastern side. It's the, it's the one corridor between Centinela and, and 26th, really, Clint, 26th and Cloverfield that goes from the top of Santa Monica, basically all the way to the bottom, because if you go to the bottom of 28th Street, then you can, then you can jog over. But my question is, when you look at the Stanford intersection and the right turn restriction, have you considered the potential impact on north-south travel that the restrictions on Colorado and Stewart are going to create? Meaning, it's going to, to a certain extent, push some traffic to Princeton and to Stanford. There's also a Days Inn at Stanford and Santa Monica that has its parking lot entrance just north of Santa Monica, right? So you're going to, you may have some small number of people coming north on Stanford. I would imagine most will be coming on Santa Monica, but maybe there are some small number of people who think they're coming north and then get confused and might, that might drive more traffic into the neighborhood. So I'm not opposed to the, to the right turn on Stanford. I understand the logic behind it and I've seen how it works on Wilshire and it makes a lot of sense in terms of safety. I think what I would just ask is that when you look at the, that side of the city, just as someone who goes north-south a lot on Yale, to think about what these restrictions in concert, how they're going to affect traffic patterns, bike, pedestrian, scooter, car, in that kind of multi-block radius between Broadway and, what would that be, Arizona?
Absolutely. And I think the benefit of working with the mobility team here is that, you know, we are working on several projects. And we understand that, you know, these projects don't exist on their own. There's, there's other impacts that, you know, that the community may face that we have to take account, so thank you for that.
Thanks, just, just to make those, just to make those connections and also on Wilshire as well, because there are right turn, there are right turn restrictions. And I think what we start to see people doing is these, these kind of jogging curves where they're really trying to get, they're trying to get north and they end up going, they go north and then turn right and then turn left and then turn right and then turn, right? And so that may be an unintended consequence and I think it would be helpful to map it and say, yeah, we're fine with this because the traffic volume is okay and they're, we're not going to have car versus pet or car versus bike collisions. But you might also map it and say, wait a second, we didn't mean for that to happen. Yeah. Thank you.
Commissioner Fresco?
Hello, welcome to Santa Monica.
Thank you.
So when we first put the scrambles in downtown, we were very hopeful. But in the very beginning, it was actually kind of problematic because people didn't know what they were or how they worked. And so do we feel confident that adding more scrambles won't renew the confusion and that we won't have one? Yeah?
It's difficult to say, you know, that some people might not be confused, but I know that some of our most prominent intersections take, at Ocean Avenue, right by the pier, that scramble intersection, I mean, I think there's visitors from all over the world at that intersection. And, and where, what we really want to do is create more of a consistent theme throughout the corridor. And I think duplicating those, those scramble locations in the downtown area where we see a lot of pedestrian foot traffic could add actually some consistency to the downtown area. There may be some people that are confused, but we do have signage. There may be some people that are confused, but we do have signage posted at the existing scramble locations, and I think people generally, you know, don't proceed with like the green light, for example, and then there's some learning there that happens when we go out.
So, do we know if the scrambles that we've installed so far have actually resulted in fewer accidents and fewer car pedestrian impacts?
I can't say off the top of my head if we've done a pre and post-safety analysis for scramble locations in general. I mean, it's something that maybe we could potentially look into and assess.
It would be nice to know if they actually worked, if we're going to do more of them. So, is Santa Monica Boulevard still a state highway, or is it a city street now?
So, Santa Monica Boulevard is part of Historic Route 66, celebrating their centennial pretty soon. My reading, if I can remember some of the pamphlets and history records on the street, it was a state highway until it was, or part of Route 66 until it was decommissioned, and then the city has sort of taken it as a city-owned street, but it's still.
So, that was like in the 80s? Because I think it was like Route 173 or something, a state route, as well as a federal route during, anyway.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure, you know, that's now, but.
Yeah.
But basically, we can do all this.
We can do all this. It was relinquished to the city from my understanding and reading of the documents.
That's the upstart. We can talk about Route 66 for hours in the future. I have one other question. Oh, yeah, about the young and the old people being most impacted. Is that because they're less likely to be driving cars than people in between, or do we, or is it that they're actually, those categories are more vulnerable?
It could be a combination of both those things. On this study, in this study in particular, we didn't dig too deep into the, you know, why, but I know of other research that indicates that younger people, in particular children, have issues sort of perceiving speeds and speeds of vehicles, and similar sort of approach can apply to older adults. So, they're generally more vulnerable in perceiving speeds and also sort of reacting to oncoming traffic. And then, to your point, yes, you know, many cases, they are, you know, without a vehicle. They don't own or operate a vehicle in some cases, and they're, you know, out on the street. But, as I mentioned in the stats, compared to their respective age groups throughout the city, there's just more young people and older adults involved in crashes, even though there's, you know, there's not more older adults and younger people in the city. But to your point, it could be that there's more people just walking.
Of those groups walking, right, right. Okay, those were my questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hamilton.
Thank you for a great presentation, and you answered a lot of my questions, and the report also addresses a lot of the concerns I do have about Santa Monica Boulevard. I have obviously driven up and down it many times. I've probably also walked or jogged up it, you know, I don't know, 30, 40 times. So, I know the Boulevard really well. And I know it, I think, you know, my concerns are really more about the experiences as either a pedestrian or a person on a bicycle. So, I really appreciate the time you took to really make those two uses a safer experience for everybody. I have a couple of questions, and then I want to talk about McKinley Elementary for a minute or two. Then I have sort of an overarching question about how the city assesses all of its streets for safety when there is not a Caltrans grant funding in place. So, you mentioned that 26% of the accidents involved a bicycle. Is that a car-on-bike accident, or is that just a bicycle crashing into something?
It's vehicle-bicycle crash, and the bicycle and scooter data was paired together for that statistic. So, it's in those cases where I mentioned the pedestrian crash, it's a vehicle pedestrian, and for bicyclists, it would be vehicle-bicycle.
Okay. A number of the intersections currently on Santa Monica have no accommodation for pedestrians. I think 19th, 12th, and 10th don't have any accommodation. It looks like you're addressing that, so I think that's great. I want to just call special attention to 19th Street. That's, to me, a very dangerous intersection to try to cross, across 19th and right there on, cars are just moving at a high rate of speed at that point. There's also a lot of intersections where, like, for example, like 16th Street. And it's also, there's an illustration of this on one of your slides where there is only one crosswalk that goes across Santa Monica Boulevard. And there is, so it's like the west side, the west side of the, let's say, on 16th Street, for example, only the eastern side of 16th Street has a crosswalk, but the western side doesn't. So, if I'm on the west side corner of 16th and Santa Monica, and I want to go to the other side, I have to cross a street three times. And it looks like that's a design element that you're maintaining on a number of these intersections. I'd say 18th, 19th, Euclid, 15th, 16th, and Princeton.
And Stanford.
And Stanford, too, yeah. What is the logic, or walk me through the reasoning of only having one crosswalk that goes across Santa Monica and not the east and the west side together?
That's a great question, and in looking at some of the crosswalks we have out there today, and I'll use Wilshire Boulevard as an example, where we had two crosswalks crossing Wilshire Boulevard at most of these intersections. Maintaining that second crosswalk is, I think was decided to be a good thing, right, to give pedestrians options and not necessarily take away from the pedestrian. Maintaining one crosswalk leg and not adding the second one, in some cases encourages pedestrians to cross at one location so that you can minimize those turning movement conflicts with traffic on Santa Monica Boulevard. So, that's one argument for maintaining one crosswalk. That paired with the flashing beacons and other sort of infrastructure that's included creates a simpler intersection, essentially, and maintains visibility. Adding a second crosswalk leg could have sort of parking impacts and other sort of sightline impacts, and it's something that, you know, maybe we can further investigate and curious to know if there's any other history.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, Kyle Cozart, Principal Transportation Planner, I worked with Carlos on this project. Yeah, I think everything Carlos said is right, and I think the only other thing I would add is that, you know, like on Wilshire, when you have those two, it starts to create, especially on multi-lane roads, it starts to make confusion, because you have to have the flashing beacons as like the indicator on all four corners, and in some cases, you have them on all, and they have to be coordinated. So, a lot of times what happens is motorists, when it's a situation like that, will see the flashing beacon, but the pedestrian might not be right there, near there, because it might be happening on the crosswalk on the other side of the intersection. And so, it starts, it can start to kind of create a little bit of confusion. And so, you know, we've thought a lot about this with Wilshire, because at Wilshire, those crosswalks were existing, and so we weren't going to remove a leg. So, we just went ahead and, you know, ramped up and did all the flashing beacons on all the corners. But I think from, as a best practice perspective, focusing the crossings, especially on those multi-lane arterials, it kind of clarifies for motorists to be able to see kind of where the pedestrian is, and they can be at one of two places rather than at four, or if there's a median, possibly six places that they're scanning for. And then, if they don't see them, there's a potential for the conflict, and it can also create non-compliance if they start to not see the pedestrian, and they just start ignoring the flashing beacons in general. So, I think that's a pattern of non-compliance.
So, yeah, but I mean, I think the experience of being on a street where, you know, say that western side of 16th and Santa Monica, and say I have a young child in tow, I have to cross a street three times as a pedestrian. And what I'm hearing, so I would say that like, to the extent that we can have a simple four-directional crosswalk, I understand there's the flashing light aspect of it, but it's just, I mean, to me, it's like, that is putting, that is a pedestrian, is not an ideal experience, and for whatever reason, there's a lot of those types of intersections on Santa Monica. And so, I would just give you my feedback that having crosswalks on both sides would be really helpful, and honestly, I would feel a lot safer as a pedestrian crossing it. The other question I had is, what kind of further, I mean, I like the idea of the scramble on 20th Street in that intersection. You mentioned it's subject to further study. What types of things are you going to be looking for to make that decision?
So, we are conducting an operations analysis of the corridor and looking at what sort of delay looks like today, vehicle delay looks like, as well as what it could look like given some enhancements on the corridor. We do know that the segment from 20th to Cloverfield in particular is one of the most sort of congested in terms of bus speeds, in terms of sort of vehicle throughput.
Right.
It's the main entrance to the hospital, sort of the side entrance, if you will, to McKinley. And there's a lot of commuter traffic that cuts southbound on 23rd Street, makes a left Santa Monica Boulevard and a right on Cloverfield.
Yeah.
So, these are, we want to make sure that we don't experience, or that people don't experience more delay in that segment when there's an additional phase introduced to 20th Street. So, an exclusive pedestrian phase would basically stop all traffic in all directions, even those right turns. So, that's something that we just want to further study before we have, you know, traffic backed up to 26th Street, and then, you know, that sort of becomes the focus of the project. So, that's something we're investigating right now.
Okay, yeah, thank you. There's a lot of density on that particular street corner, and the fact there is a lot of pedestrians that use that intersection, and a scramble just seems like a good idea. I want to talk real quickly about McKinley. I think it's a really important oversight that we need to draw attention to. If you look at the boundary of who goes to McKinley, I would say three-quarters of that is south of Santa Monica Boulevard, and these are students that are going to have to cross Santa Monica to get to school. You mentioned you got a lot of community feedback about that intersection at Chelsea, and really, it's Park that then crosses Santa Monica, I think, then turns into Chelsea. I really want to emphasize that right now, there's no pedestrian accommodation. I think that there needs to be as much accommodation as we can make for students crossing there, because if you're coming from south and going across Santa Monica Boulevard, and you're on foot, or if you're on a bike and you're a young kid, there is not, you have to, you have 26th Street, and then you have Cloverfield, and that whole stretch in between is a pretty high-speed corridor. So, I would say putting a marked bike lane across Park into Chelsea and protecting that to the extent possible, maybe putting a pedestrian refuge island in the street there with flashing lights. Also, 25th Street, right now, there, as you go from Broadway north on 25th to Santa Monica, there are big concrete planters that block that street, so cars can't travel through. But I think it's overall a pretty quiet street, and if you took one of those planters out and you just put a bike lane through there, that could be another way for kids to get from Broadway to Santa Monica safely, and then they can then use the pedestrian crossing that we'd like to create at Chelsea, which is just one block away from that. I think that's just two opportunities to take into consideration the fact that we have a lot of elementary school kids going to that school who are coming, who have to cross Santa Monica Boulevard to make that as safe as possible for them.
Right, thank you.
Commissioner Chaco.
Thank you. Appreciate the presentation, Carlos. Have a few questions and some clarifications. I wasn't able to tell from the maps, but are you proposing curb extensions at all locations where there are through and right turn restrictions on unsignalized intersections at this point?
That is correct.
You are. I'm glad to hear that. I wasn't able to tell.
Yeah.
But I assume that there would be a concern about higher speeds at intersections if they weren't.
Yeah, and that's what the data shows, obviously. The severity is higher at those unsignalized intersections, so where there is a crosswalk, adding curb extensions. Where there is no crosswalk, adding a crosswalk and the curb extensions.
I see. Great, glad to hear that. Also, very glad to hear that you're looking at signal timing between 20th and 26th. Great to hear that. I noticed that in one of the early slides where you're showing the location of crashes, 4th Street, the intersection of 4th Street really lights up.
Yeah.
But I haven't seen much attention paid in the recommendations to that. So, I was curious to see what's behind that.
Yeah, that's a great observation. We obviously, like, 4th Street stands out in terms of crash history when you look at sort of all crashes that have occurred there, and that includes property damage only, so like fender benders and things like that. So, it's going to light up. There's just a lot of activity in that intersection generally, and we are looking to recommendations for that intersection. We didn't show you those recommendations. I think it's still part of our investigation. 4th Street does have a scramble crosswalk right now. There's pretty much most of the improvements that can be, you know, take place there have already been implemented. So, we'll give it another pass and see what other things, what's happening on 4th Street and what we can recommend. But a lot of the crashes are sort of those non-severe crashes on 4th Street.
In the early part of the presentation, you showed the slide where the 85th percentile speeds are shown as higher than the posted speed limits. And I'm assuming that a lot of the proposed changes are intended to try to bring those down, correct? Does the scope of the study involve coming back after to see how effective they are in terms of reducing speeds?
So, this study does not have a post-insulation evaluation to it. I think that would be a separate effort. So, this study is meant to document sort of the historic crash patterns, put some recommendations together, which would be approved in a plan. We would then need to find funding to implement these recommendations, at which point we can add sort of a pre- and post-analysis. So, that would be, you know, down the line, you know, so this is just the plan to kick off the project, and any evaluation can be done carried, you know, once construction takes place.
Thanks. And lastly, I think I'd just like to reiterate what Commissioner Hamilton said regarding the support for having crosswalks on all sides of the intersections.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just one quick one. I was just thinking about this, particularly with what Commissioner Hamilton was saying about the areas around McKinley. One of the things that I've noticed at Pico and 20th Street is that ever since crossing on the flashing red became legal, there's, it can be difficult at peak hours to make a right turn onto 20th Street from Pico westbound, particularly when SMC is letting out or about to start. And it's because what happens is there's no dedicated right turn, and people are crossing that intersection, heading east in particular, and they use the entire time, and then you get a line of cars that are trying to turn right. Fortunately, I mean, I've never seen that it's led to any kind of a, more than just an impatient conflict, but I worry about it. And so, I'm wondering whether you have considered no rights on red at any intersections off of Santa Monica, particularly around McKinley and around the hospitals, but also dedicated green right, you know, green arrows, so that you could, you know, even if you're not doing a full scramble. And if you do a scramble, maybe let's have no rights on red, like, nobody moves during the pedestrian scramble, and then if you're not doing a scramble, look for some.
some opportunities to really mode separate uh, vehicles and pedestrians. Cause I see it in the context of a relatively busy intersection elsewhere in the city near a school. Um, and I, you know, I worry. Like I, I genuinely worry at some point that um, somebody's going to get impatient or um, you know, something, something bad's going to happen. And then the other thing, of course, that happens is when, as those cars line up, uh, people duck up 21st Street and then, and then jog over or even the alley. So we want to avoid that on Santa Monica as well. And then that's why I framed the question that way.
Absolutely. I think for, for 20th Street as an example, um, it does warrant further investigation. We're doing a traffic operations analysis for that intersection, but also, you know, east into 26th Street. Um, and yeah, that's, that's part of what it will look at. And we ultimately have to have some recommendations for uh, how we best separate movements, whether that's through the existing left turn green arrows or right turn green arrows, or a scramble with a no right turn on red, or extend, you know, pedestrian walk times, um, or even, you know, flashing yellow left turn arrows. So there's uh, quite a few tools in the toolbox, but it does warrant some additional study at this moment.
Thanks. Yeah, I noticed you were looking at a scramble at, at 20th Street in Santa Monica. And I think that would be really, really important to have no car movement during the pedestrian walk time uh, at a place like that where it's functionally one campus, right, around the, right near the hospital. So I, I were, and to your point about 19th earlier, it's not just 19th, it's 19th, 18th, 17th, it's that whole, because people do park. I, I mean, I still remember um, walking around there. If you're, I'll make this personal. If your, if your spouse is in labor and you need to run for, I don't know, donuts, that's where you go. You leave UCLA and you walk south on 16th or 17th and there just happens to be an excellent donut shop. But you take your life in your hands as you cross Santa Monica to get there.
Absolutely. I think uh, DK Donuts in this case on the corridor, it's a major destination.
I have a question for you. Excellent presentation, by the way.
Thank you.
Um, is there any, as part of this, putting electronic warnings to people who are speeding permanently on places like Santa Monica Boulevard? Is there anything part of this?
So in other uh, agencies that I've worked for, speed feedback signs, I believe, is what you're referring to, where if you're traveling above a certain speed, there's a sign that indicates what your speed is. Um, and I think there are some in Santa Monica. I'm thinking of my route to, to home on my bike on uh, 23rd Street, for example, on the downhill part. Uh, it has shown some um, success in terms of crash reduction factor, um, although minimal. Uh, and in some cases shown sort of the reverse effect, but in some rare cases where people sort of try to, oh.
Well, it seems like speeding, speeding could be the cause of a lot of these accidents.
Yeah.
With bikes and other cars and whatever.
It, it could certainly be a, a tool that we use. I think uh, it would warrant uh, further discussion with our team, but that's a good recommendation.
Thank you.
One more comment, Sam. Just one more comment. Yeah. Um, I, I wanted to make just one more comment. Um, you know, in terms of going back to this, uh, protecting the crossing at Chelsea, uh, we did, the city did put in a flashing uh, pedestrian crosswalk um, at, at St. John's, crossing Santa Monica. And um, I just think that's more kind of more support for this idea of doing something like that uh, for the benefit of McKinley. Um, so I think that's, just wanted to mention that. Also, because I have you and because we've brought up some other streets uh, in Santa Monica, I'd be remiss if I didn't raise, in fact, we've, we've talked about this, Kyle, I think, before, um, the issue of speeding on San Vicenti Boulevard. Um, as someone who lives approximate to San Vicenti, I will say that it is a ongoing and repeated problem of, of freeway speeds up and down um, throughout the day. And it's, it's a unique boulevard. It's a two-way uh, divided highway. It was, uh, it really is designed for cars to travel at very high speed. And um, and I'm talking about 50 to 60 to sometimes 70. Um, and so what we need to have is, I don't want to talk about San Vicenti. Uh, there's no, no reason to talk about solutions here, but what needs to happen is Santa Monica Police Department needs to have a dialogue with mobility so that both of you guys are able to talk. Because we talked to the city of, the, the police department, they're well aware of the speeding issue. Um, mobility needs to also be aware that this is a, a real issue and is honestly, I've seen some very serious crashes or some very close calls. So I just want to call that to your attention while I have you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I have one public input from Jerry Rubin.
Uh, thanks again, and thank you for this timely and important presentation on traffic safety. I never had a car, never had a driver's license, and I was hit by a car a few years ago, right in Ocean Park, 4th and Bicknell. And it was a mess. I was pretty careful, as I always am, but I can guarantee I'm gonna, I'm even more careful now, no matter what. And I urge everyone to be careful, whether you're driving or biking or walking. Don't be in so much of a hurry. Don't bring those cell phones out, whether you're walking across the street or whether you're driving or biking. My leg was injured. I could walk thankfully, but I was never able to run again from the guy that hit me. St. John's took good care of me though, and the rehab. As far as transit stuff, uh, I support the big blue bus. I think it's a safety thing that we don't have all uh, automatic stuff. People put those dollar bills in, interferes with the driver. Sometimes they are driving and people come up and try to put that dollar bill in and the driver tries to help. And I like it better when we try to get to cashless, just cards. And I know there was a backlash on that, so they switched back, but I'm hoping they can go back again because it's a safety issue. So I think education is one of the main things. And I think we're doing pretty good on that. And I think we ought to just continue to remind people to be careful no matter what we are doing. And the other thing is, those scrambles are pretty good. I think they're pretty good. The only problem I see is the bikes go through sometimes, there's crowds of people, right where the light rail is especially. And that's an accident waiting to happen. So how do you keep that from happening? When those scrambles are happening, you have to think of a way to make sure the bikes aren't going through and the bikes are obeying the rules and stopping at stop signs and not speeding through. Because you get hit by a bike, it's going to hurt pretty bad. And I think we're improving because the Bike Coalition are educating people. But it's still a problem. When we use the word vehicles in this report, let's not forget, bikes are vehicles too. So it should be automobiles and bikes, not that, because bikes are vehicles. And um, thank you again for your report.
Nancy Gordon.
I think we uh, are, that, we need to um, vote to allow for uh, extra public comment? Is that what?
Yeah, this was a late shit, so the commission needs to vote to hear.
Okay.
Oh, oh, okay.
A move that we hear.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you for that.
And, and per your rules of order, you'll have one minute.
One minute, right.
Oh, thank you very much for taking that. Um, I just want to comment really quickly that things have gotten really bad on California. Um, I live at, uh, 4th, well, north of California, but from 12th, or maybe, not even St. Monica's, yeah, probably from 12th on down. They're flying through the four-way stops come on the cross streets across California. I've, myself, have also been, almost been hit quite a bit. They didn't even come to a full stop. And I guess it's because of 34 seconds, because of cell phones, they don't even look left, right, or left anymore. They've just got the tunnel vision. They just tap and go when I'm in the intersection. Don't come, so if we could see if Santa Monica Police Department could do some, um, it'd be revenue for the city, a lot of traffic enforcement, because it's really getting out of hand. Thank you for, so much for letting me speak late.
I think that's all we, oh, go ahead.
Are we through with this item?
Can we what?
Are we through with this item?
Okay.
Um, I would like to suggest that we move item 8C next, because we have a lot of people in the audience who are here to speak, and I don't know how much longer they're going to last. They, they've been very patient.
I have no problem with that.
Okay. Do we need a vote?
Yeah.
Do we need?
Yes.
Then I move, we, uh, move 8C up to the next, be the next item.
Second.
Is our staff ready for that?
Yes, they are.
We need to vote.
I, I just, I mean, these people probably have to get home. And I'm sure they have homes and families. And it'd be nice to actually let them go.
Do we need to vote?
Can we just have a vote on moving item 8C up? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We have staff presentation?
Yes, hi everyone. Sorry, can I, Chair, I think it might be appropriate, in case people are not aware that this is a study session, and that, I've, I've received an email earlier asking if we were making recommendations, just to remind the public that we are not taking action tonight. So um, we're, we're learning along with them.
Thank you.
But we can certainly express opinions.
Oh, yeah. But we're not vote, we're not.
I understand.
We're not voting. Yeah.
Hi, uh, thank you for having me today, Commissioners. My name is Tony Lopez. I am the city's senior park planner as of just over a year ago. Um, I am part of the Airport Conversion Project team. Uh, and this is my first time presenting to you. I've been here with Amber in the past, but uh, Peter might be joining in. He's coming in from the airport this evening, but I will go ahead and get us started. This is nice, too. I usually have to plug in myself. Um, so today, we're going to do a little bit of a project overview, uh, give you some input on where we're, uh, where we currently stand in the project, uh, give a little bit of introduction to the site design layers, the VES, the survey, and the letters of interest, and the next steps for the project. Uh, as we all, uh, you may or may not know, uh, the Santa Monica Airport Conversion Project, uh, the airport closure has been decided per the February 28th, 2017 City Council Resolution Number 11026. Um, the project will explore the feasibility of a preferred, oh, of a preferred scenario uh, for the conversion of the Santa Monica Airport centered on a great park. Currently, we are in Phase 3A, which is defining the future with three scenarios. Uh, currently, we have our community engagement scheduled for May 17th, Saturday, at the airport. Uh, and we have already uh, posted the virtual education session number four and the first online survey for this Phase 3A. There will be another subsequent survey that goes live on 517 as well, uh, that will be more focused on the three scenarios. Uh, just for everyone's re-edification, uh, we are looking at studying the whole 192 acres, actually 191.6 acres. Uh, and just as a general kind of uh, understanding of where you, we are on the airport site, uh, we typically, uh, in conversations refer to the north zone, which is everything north of the runway and taxiways, directly adjacent to the Santa Monica Business Park, the runway and taxiways, and then the south zone, which uh, currently has like our airport park and Barker Hangar and that, uh, most of that area. Uh, Phase 1 community engagement went really well, and uh, we are pleased to say that with each phase, where it's getting better and better, more and more participation from the community. Uh, and we had a community workshop in each phase of the project, followed by pop-up events, a project website update, virtual education sessions that correlate with the information that will be presented to the community in that phase, as well as an online survey. And you might have noticed over the last, I think it was the last phase, there was a couple of different surveys, and this is another phase where we'll have a couple of different surveys. And we're really doing our best to really get those surveys down uh, in terms of time. But of course, there's a lot of information to present, so we want to be sure that we provide as much information as we can to the community. Phase 2, as I mentioned, continuing to grow in the complete responses. Um, Phase 2 was all about establishing the guiding principles. Um, in uh, January of this past year, council confirmed what at the end of last year were the draft guiding principles. Uh, the five you see here, start with nature, inspire wonder, balance economics, amplify versatility, and celebrate place. All of these are our guiding principles for the project, at which we will use as benchmarks for decisions that are being made throughout the design process for the three scenarios. So, a bit of an introduction to the site design layers. Now, as planners, as designers, uh, it's very easy to want to jump into the, the fun part, the drawing. But we, we realize that as part of that process, there's a lot of things that happen behind the scenes that create the justification for why certain design decisions are made, which is what we, in this uh, particular project, began to call the site design layers. Those elements of the project that form the creation of what ultimately becomes the fun part. What we really wanted to do was bring the community along in that process to help on, everyone understand the thinking behind such a robust project. It's 192 acres. It's huge. It's, it, it's bigger than any of the parks we have. The site alone is larger than all of our park acreage combined. So thinking about how all that, all those uh, layers work together, like connectivity and mobility, water and topography, um, active recreation, passive recreation, all, how all those things work together. It's a very complex uh, series of questions that we have to ask each other about. So we wanted to extend those questions out to the community. Uh, the Phase 3A and 3B timeline, uh, in uh, December, we had our Phase 2 community event, which we introduced the draft guiding principles. In January of 25, we uh, presented those draft guiding principles to council, at which point, with one minor edit to the first, uh, became the guiding principles for the project. In April, uh, we distributed the online survey for the design layers. May 17th, as mentioned, will be our community event, which is being held at the airport. Uh, and uh, that will be the first time the community uh, will see the three test fit scenarios. And also, we are tracking to also make uh, the, all the information that we, we received from the online survey 3A at that event. So currently, it's, we had about 5,000 people respond to the survey with about 2,000 completed responses. So a lot of people are dedicated to the project itself. And so it's a lot of information to collate, tabulate, put together to present. So at that meeting, at that community event, that's the first time that will be public. At that same time, that information will be made available online as well. In July, we have our council meeting to present all of that information, including the three scenarios to council. And in fall, we'll hopefully be moving into our preferred scenario. So what is a design, site design layer? As mentioned, a site design layer represents different ways of composing the most prominent considerations for a project. As I mentioned, connectivity, mobility, water, topography, how all those things work together to essentially create what will ultimately be a scenario. So the site design layers that we looked at for uh, this phase, again, connectivity, mobility, water and topography, ecology and passive uses, active park uses, housing, because this is the first time based on council direction in January, that housing was introduced as a component of the project, and revenue generation, because again, uh, the project must be self-sustaining from an economic standpoint.
They're doing great.
Okay. Um, so as part of the 3A survey, uh, the committee was presented with uh, four different versions of each of these six layers. So on the left were the least intense, on the right, the most intense interpretation of those uh, different layers. So for example, connectivity and mobility, uh, option A, there was no introduction of roads. But in option D, there was three new roads. So as you can see, it kind of uh, created a range of uh, um, intensity within each of those layers. Um, how fast did she, she got to these?
Uh, just.
Okay. Um, let's see how it goes. There's a lot of them. Uh, so when it comes to connectivity and mobility, uh, we asked ourselves, how does this layer connect to the guiding principles? How does the site context influence opportunities and constraints? And what are the different potential approaches to this layer on the site? So these three questions are the primary questions that were asked when evaluating each of these layers. Um, each layers, uh, each layer conversation was presented with the initial introduction, uh, reintroduction of the site analysis that was conducted in Phase 1. And then uh, four options were presented for the connectivity and mobility layer. Uh, again, option A, the most simple, option D, the most complex. And with that, uh, each of those options was paired with an analysis. with that, each of those options was paired with an analysis of the pedestrian experience, the number of site access points and gateways, and the vehicular connectivity access to the site. So, not only is it about the layers, but it's about all these nuances within that layer that helped to reinforce the identity of what ultimately defines that layer. Water and topography, again, introducing the information that was collated through the site analysis inventory in Phase 1, and again, four options of least intense to most intense, and then again, the evaluation of the different components within water and topography, like the distribution of the water on the site, the approach to topography as a result of that water introduction, and the experience of water recreation in and of itself within that layer. For ecology and passive uses, again, reintroducing the site analysis and inventory as a basis of the study of that layer. Currently, the site is about 20% pervious landscape, with the remaining being impervious. And of course, you know, as we transition from Phase 1 into Phase 2, and understanding the desired uses that we heard from the community throughout that engagement process, this is where we start to layer in more information on the specificity, on the particular uses related to the passive uses, and you will see a little bit more on the active uses, in terms of how we start to fold in some of those uses as part of the, I'll say, the, the two-dimensional study of how this park can potentially lay out relative to a scenario. Again, when it comes to ecology and passive uses, least intense A, most intense D, and you can start to see how the, in this particular layer, you're starting to get a little bit more design introduced, because a lot of these ecology and passive uses start to inform the, the organization of space, and it can start to help create the identity of what a particular scenario might become. Again, areas dedicated to ecology and passive uses change from A to D, with A being least intense, D being most. The organization of ecology and passes uses, now this becomes a bit of a study in design and organization through the site, as you can see, it's something a little bit more rectilinear versus something more organic, and the amount and distribution of ecology and other uses throughout the site, from more sporadic and throughout versus more condensed and organized into one central location. Active park uses, again, this is where we start to pull in the inventory of our current park network, which coincidentally, I will present after this on the Park and Rec Master Plan, but this is an inventory of our current park network as it stands today, at 144.31 acres, and distribution throughout our city. Again, when it comes to active uses, reinforcing that all of this effort is based on the community input, and what they had expressed as their primary preferred uses, and that was correlated into these seven primary bubbles, if you will, that can help us preliminarily kind of organize those through the site, as you can see here, represented by these, these graphics. And so, A looks at kind of sprinkling the intensity of those uses throughout the site, B is start to kind of give them a little bit more organization around a central urban green, C looks at combining all those active uses into a centralized location, and D looks at a similar approach, but really thinks about how those uses start to grow and expand as well. So, A is their, their comprehensive location throughout the site and their scale, and as you get to D, that scale grows and their locations with one, within one another get closer and closer together. Housing, you want to open on this one?
I can, I'll be at that one. Sure. Good evening, Planning Commission, Peter James, fresh off an airplane from Mexico. I'm sorry that I am late.
Happy birthday.
Thank you, and happy birthday. So, as Tony mentioned, the council introduced the notion of setting housing at the airport at their meeting back early January, I believe, and as a way to introduce housing to the conversation, we added it as a layer. It's really the reason that we stepped into the layer methodology, as opposed to coming out with three test fits, just initially, as was the original plan. Our assumption was that if we created two polarities, a no-housing option and a option that had housing, we would not have as much information on some of the building blocks of the site, connectivity, water, topography, et cetera. So, housing becomes, this is the way that we introduce housing to the site, and on that spectrum that Tony has described, you can see that option A has no housing. That is the no-vote option, which was also a recommendation from the council, that at least one of the three test fit scenarios is a no-vote option. The other, they also asked for an option that did include, and I quote, "some housing." So, fairly nebulous direction there, and we're trying our best here to get our heads around, where would the best location for that housing be accommodated? Is it centralized in one portion of the site? Is it distributed? Or is it organized along a series of interior roadway networks that really comport with the connectivity layer? It's important to note some of the subcategories that is presented on this slide, some of the correspondence that you received today criticized some of this, and so I wanted to explain a little bit why things like revenue potential is mentioned here as a, as a metric. The main direction that we have received from the project onset is that this project be self-sustaining, both in terms of its capital costs, as well as its ongoing operations and maintenance. We have very little development opportunity, based on Measure LC, that is the, the A version here, that puts us into the realm of adaptive reuse, potential, potentially some leasable space for sports and recreation, and then on the other end of the spectrum is neighborhood development. And so those, those are in fact important concepts for us to consider as we design the balance of uses and activities at the airport site. We have not waded into what type of housing that may be, what the densities are, because we're really just testing the use. As you're all aware, housing is a prohibited use at the airport for Measure LC, and so we wanted to ease into the conversation by just asking the community if they, what they thought about these general sizes of development pads and the locations. And we can get more into the, the discussion of, of the correspondence you received at a later time, if you'd like. The last layer is revenue generation, so this ties into what I was saying before about the prevalence of adaptive reuse sites, potentially if we stay with a, an LC compliant option on the site. This graphic here shows the location of many of the, of the hangars, their cultural significance, and their likelihood to be adaptively reused, and this is based on the Cultural Resources Report that Nina sent us some correspondence about earlier this week. A lot of the use, the, the structures that are present on the site may in fact lend themselves to some type of revenue generation in a land use pattern that was preferred by the community in the first survey. So, things like restaurants and food halls and, and farmers' markets, amphitheaters, things of that nature, may find a home in some of these spaces presently at the airport. But of course, we're looking for perhaps quicker implementation, a more robust program, so we began to expand the inventory of options that we study in this master planning effort, all the way from just simply recreation on the runway to revenue generating opportunities that would bring some dollars to the project, accelerate the timeframe, and provide more of the amenities that the community has indicated they want in, in shorter time. And so, this spectrum really looks at ways where we can adaptively reuse the hangar space at the airport, that's both in the, the north and the south part of the airport, and really begin to reuse the runway as the central recreation space. And on the far extreme side, on D, that's where those revenue generating development pads come into play, linked with roadway networks, pedestrian access points, and new gateways to connect, to connect users to the park. Our pie charts up here are interesting, although I don't think they're very successfully expressed. They're really meant to show the portion of, of the airport site that is converted to green space. So there, the, for an example, section A, where you see the hatched line around the green and the gray, that is showing the portion of the airport that is a recreation space, but you can see half of it's gray, because it's still tarmac, because there aren't enough dollars, likely enough dollars, to support conversion of the asphalt to green space. Whereas, on the extreme end, on D, you can see that the gray is gone, that space has been converted. And these are based on assumptions that still need to be validated through robust economic testing, and that process is underway right now. And there, there you can see the little clock is, is showing that, that implementation timeframe, which could or could not be an important component of this for the community, still testing that. So our survey closed, or I'm sorry, this is not the survey, this is about the letter of interest. We published a letter of interest, we sent it out into the world, asking folks to describe to us proposals for what their concepts were for activities at the airport site that could generate revenue. And that closed on the 28th, which was Monday. We had originally attempted to close it on Sunday, but we, some community members asked us for an extension so they could inform their local churches or groups that gather on Sundays, and we received 69 responses from that. We have not gone through them yet. A lot of us have been traveling. Tony and I are here tonight because the rest of our team is in Portland, receiving the Living Building Challenge certificate for the City Hall building next door. So when they get back, we'll all sit together as a team and, and go through that list. Tony has already advertised the event on Saturday, May 17. We invite as many of you who can possibly come to come. We're going to be running bus tours, so that's a plug for anybody in the audience. If you want to get on the tarmac, roll around the runway, see how physically large the site is, and appreciate the edge conditions for the sake of, of urban design. We invite you to come out. We'll also be showcasing the results of that survey. We'll be unveiling the three test fit scenarios that are taking all of the information from the layers and putting them into three different scenarios for the, as we move into Phase 3B. And here's just a little bit of an abbreviated timeline as we march towards that council meeting in July. And I think I'll stop there. Tony, thank you very much for covering, and we're happy to take your questions.
Do you want to do questions before we're the public? Are we going to do questions for most to staff at this point? What are we doing?
Should we take the public comment first and then just...
Okay, that's cool.
Let's do the public comment first.
We have a lot of them.
How many do we have?
Two, two minutes.
Two minutes.
Two minutes apiece.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The first person is Vivian Rothstein.
Can you call three? Call the first three. So Vivian...
And Anne Bowman. And Jerry Rubin again.
Hi, good evening.
If Anne and Jerry can line up behind Vivian, that'd be great. Thank you.
Good evening. I have two points I'd like to make. The same evening tonight, you're going to also be considering the Parks Master Plan, and that report indicates that actually the area that is slated for this great park is an area with the least need for open space in the entire city, and the, the real need is in an, in an other, much more densely populated area. So I think it kind of, all the push on a park, as if this area, I live in Sunset Park, I've lived here, there for 43 years, I use the Cloverfield Park a lot, and I'm aware of the open space that's available, and it's mostly single-family homes in that area, not entirely, but mostly, and it really is not an area of major need. I'd also like to say that in looking at the need for park and the proposal for a park in this area, there's really disregard for the amount of open space that's available in our beachfront, three and a half miles of beachfront, two, and 245 acres of sand with many recreational activities. It doesn't matter that it's run by the county and not by us. We all use it, most of us use it, and it's enormous. So, it feels to me that there's really, there's, there's some kind of shudders on people's eyes that are, that are going through this process, and I, I really encourage you to take yours off and look at actually what the situation is with parks in this city, as opposed to the need for housing. We're in a county with a, with a countywide extreme housing crisis. But the, the second thing I'd like to mention is that the input process designed by the Sasaki Company, in my mind and in the mind of many of us, has been impenetrable.
Okay.
Thanks. Good evening. My name is Anne Bowman. I'm one of your Recreation and Parks Commissioners. I've never addressed the commission before, delighted to be here. I'm going to speak really fast. I'm only speaking as an individual, but I wanted to throw some facts at you. First of all, just a reminder that the Measure LC City Charter Amendment was voted on by almost 16,000 people in our city, passed by over 60% of the voters. Some people probably, like everyone in this room, knew that a ballot measure, right, could overrule it at some point, but most people voting, I think, thought they were voting for a park and they're excited about it, and that's what we're hearing on the ground level as Rec and Parks Commissioners. A couple of other facts, yes, we do have a beach. It offers different things than our parks do. It's not green, it's not regenerative. It's also maybe going to go away in 50 to 100 years. Sustainability right now is doing dune and habitat restoration to address sea level rise. That ironically is impacting the recreation spaces that the community and all of our tourists and visitors use, so keep that in mind. We also are an extremely park poor city. We only have 1.4 acres of parks per 1,000 residents. That's only 0.2 acres more than the city of Compton, which is terrible for Compton, and it's sad for Santa Monica. As good planners, planning is about building right and all the traffic safety and those types of, of considerations that we all do, but it's also about balancing that density with open space. It's a yin and a yang. If you read the 1997 Open Space Element, which I reread recently, you'll be a little bit sad, because, you know, as you know, we're RFPing for Bergamo, we're RFPing for 45th and Arizona. We've developed the Civic Center with buildings, and we've lost a lot of kind of the vision for open space that the city set forth in that plan. So it did kind of make me sad. We are a city, so I was just in New York City. The only thing that makes New York City livable is Central Park. The land that we have to envision is less than a fourth the size of Central Park. We need to build our park. Thank you so much.
Jerry. Jerry, before you start, Frank Gruber, Denny Zane, and Rabbi Neil Comas Daniels are next on the list.
And so who's after Neil?
Joe Patel.
It's your stock right here. Jerry Rubin, I'm a member of the Urban Forest Task Force, but I'm speaking just for myself. We need a vision, a vision that Mother Nature would be proud of. The highest goals here was nature, and we should be proud that our community is, in the surveys, have said that. It means we as Santa Monicans respect Mother Nature and want this parkland. There are still people that'll try to do anything to divide people, to figure out ways to keep the airport open. That shouldn't happen, and we need to respect the ballot initiative and what the people voted for, as Anne had said. Yeah, we have a lot of beach space, but you can't plant trees in the sand. Sure, we could have beach volleyball. We started it here. Can't play soccer in the sand. Kids are going to need a lot more soccer fields like the one we just dedicated so honorably, right over there across from San Mo High. We're going to need lots of them. Don't forget, culture and art is part of our sustainable city plan, and we're going to have that. to have that, and it's going to be allowed. I'm a big housing supporter, we need it. We need to convince the NIMBYs that don't want it in their neighborhoods that we can get it there, even if we have to go a little bit higher. We need to unite the housing activists and the environmental activists to make sure that we're not going to lose everything we gained because people are going to want to divide us. We need housing, the business park, the perimeters on the transit corridors, everywhere in our city, downtown, and you name it, but not there. And there is a wonderful, wonderful program and a plan put out by the Sustainable Committee of the Great Park that talks about the financial viability of this. It's not going to be needed to be all in place right at 2028 when it's ended, but it'll gradually grow, and Mother Nature will be happy.
Hi, good evening. Frank Gruber. I wasn't going to come tonight, but I'm here because of the attacks on the airport conversion process that I read about in the public comments for tonight's meeting. The process is perfect, but based on the public involvement, so far, this process has been one of the most successful I've seen in the 35 years I've been paying attention to planning in Santa Monica. Unfortunately, people who don't like the results of a process typically attack the process itself. This goes back to the first process I was involved in for the original Civic Center Plan in the early 90s, and I've seen it many times since. In the case of the current process, there is no basis for attacks from my friends in the pro-housing side. There has always been opportunity to show support for housing. What the housing supporters don't like is that the planners and public works have been clear to show that housing would require a vote to amend Measure LC. The public knows that a vote would stop the process in its tracks, and nothing would be planned by the time the airport closes. But even more important, housing is being considered in the process. There were always going to be considered three schematic planning templates, and City Council made it clear that one would include housing. We park supporters have never had any problem with housing being studied in the planning process. Let's continue the process for planning the most important Santa Monica land use decision in generations. Let's create a great park and a great legacy for future generations. Thank you.
No question. Frank, I'm confused, you say that you don't have a problem with housing on the property? Am I hearing you correctly?
I didn't say that. I want to plan for a park, we have no problem with it being studied, but...
What's the point of studying it if you don't believe it should happen?
Well, you study to see if it could help with the financing of the park, you never know.
But that would take the LC reversal, right?
Well, but we don't want anything to happen before closure, basically. That, what we don't like about what's going on right now is that without saying to people that it would stop this process with a ballot measure, that's what's being in effect proposed.
So you think the airport people would band together, and if we put it on the ballot before 28, that would all go kablooey?
Absolutely. I mean, they've already gone to the Airport Commission with plans for investing millions of dollars in Atlantic Aviation, they talked about vertical takeoff and landing things, they are, we believe, we, I'm not speaking for Airport to Park tonight, but I will, in that sense, I can't speak for them. We are very anxious, nervous, that the aviation industry will come back with another ballot measure, and if they will, if they can show as they did in 2014, if their argument will be, they'll build another Playa Vista there. They won't necessarily say what would be a plan, they'll say, you know, something huge, and they'll say, we need the airport for fires, they'll say you'll be able to get on a VTOL to take you to Las Vegas, they'll say anything. And if we present a bait and switch to the public who voted for a park and say, we're going to stop this process and start planning housing, I think they'll win. They got 40% last time, 40% of Santa Monicans voted for an airport, they don't have to get much more than that to win another ballot measure.
I don't agree with you, but I, you know, we can talk privately, or I can, in my discussion...
I mean, I'm just giving you what...
By the way, I'm an old White Sunset Park homeowner, and I want to see housing at the airport.
Well, it's fine, I mean, I understand that, I'm not, again, as you know, for a long time, I've been, for 30 years, I've been probably the most pro-housing person involved in Santa Monica politics. And, but in this case, this land is what we need for a great park. Now, there's, as you will see on, as we know, there are buildings on it, not all those 192 acres can be a park, everything should be explored, we're going to be using money from it to build the park, to maintain it. But, this process has to continue the way it's going to conclusion, to get an environmental review for a project, for a park project. They can, alternatives in the IR, they can look at them, but let's get a park plan going.
Next person, please.
Excuse me?
Next person.
Okay.
Is it Mr. Zane or my son?
Yes.
Is it Denny?
Denny.
Okay, yeah.
Community members, I'm Denny Zane, Planning Commissioners, good to see you all. I'm a former council member, former mayor here, been around working in this community a long time. This is an extraordinary opportunity, it is an extraordinary opportunity for two really important objectives, one of which is a great park, another of which is a good opportunity for significant affordable housing. Now, I think when people voted on the ballot measure to close the airport, they were voting to close the airport, and it was really not front of mind about it being exclusively used as a park. But, be that as it may, nobody I know has any interest in a ballot measure before 2028 at all, except perhaps airport advocates. And I agree with Frank that we should be unified to make sure it's never going to continue to be an airport. But that means we should figure out a both and, a collaboration between us, about how a great park can happen and how we can meet what we think is, frankly, a community and moral obligation to help address the housing needs of our community and our region. That's what we're looking for here, is some acknowledgement that we have an obligation as a community to use this land to its most effective public purpose. Park is certainly one of those most effective public purposes, but affordable housing is another. And I'm speaking here on behalf of Santa Monicans for renters' rights. I do want to say that the survey that we took did not, in our view, adequately assess public community's feeling about housing at the park, because it really framed it all as a revenue generator, not at all as meeting the objectives of affordable housing in the community as a social objective. And I think that really is what motivates the housing advocates here, is to try to meet social responsibilities, not revenue generation objectives. There are other ways to meet revenue generation objectives, and I look forward to having that discussion in the future. But for now, please, it's not a both and, it's not an either/or, it's a both and.
Thank you, Denny. I actually have a question about the study process, because I read the SMUR letter, and I'm curious whether SMUR and others are engaging beyond the boundaries of the park. Obviously, there are substantial, there is the business park just north where there are questions about the future of that site and whether or not that might not include housing. Essentially, I'm curious whether there's been, I mean, I've asked this question, you know, in this process before, but I'm wondering whether there is a broader community conversation, because to the extent that there is a need to think through, to think through the development of housing in that neighborhood largely, it strikes me that there is an advantage to thinking about it holistically, from, all the way from Santa Monica College all the way north to Ocean Park, and from Centinela all the way, all the way west to essentially 25th Street, so...
In fact, I think the affordable housing question, housing question generally speaking, is an eight-square-mile question for us, and it involves entire community. Certainly, it's the case that the business park on the south, on their side of the airport is an opportunity for housing. It's also in private ownership, and they're going to dictate the outcome far more than we are, though I think we should try to work with them to try to ensure a significant part of our affordable housing obligation is met there. But I don't think that relieves us of the obligation to look at the public land as well to help meet that. And again, not 100%, we're looking, I think, if we had a, I know many of the people who work on the Great Park advocacy effort, and I know many of them are affordable housing advocates as well, and I know that they're sympathetic with some of these objectives. And I know that our SMUR advocates and SMUR members are also very sympathetic with the objective of a great park. And if we really want to make it happen, we should, I think, collaborate, unite, and make sure the airport operators don't put something on the ballot that keeps the airport open. We can do that.
And then, just as far on the revenue generation side, I'm struck that you said, you know, we shouldn't do anything that would create a ballot measure before 2028. Revenue generation for the park is itself a challenge, as we all know, but revenue generation for affordable housing itself is now under profound existential threat from Washington. So, you know, is there thought, are there discussions about how that housing would be financed no matter where it is located?
Well, you may know that my professional life is...
I do.
...is involved very heavily in the questions of how we generate resources for affordable housing, transit, and other public objectives. So, yeah, it's always on my mind. I do think that ballot measures will be one of our most important tools there, because local governments' tools are limited, state governments' tools are limited, limited by Prop 13, as well as other legislation. So if we want to have significant resources, not give the land away to commercial purposes to address those park needs, or housing needs for that matter, we should be thinking about ballot measures, but after 2028.
Got it, thank you.
I just have one quick question, I want some clarification, do you say we should not actually determine a scenario with housing and do an EIR, et cetera, before 2028?
I'm not, no, I'm not saying that, I'm sure I know my opinion about that, we shouldn't be doing a ballot measure before 2028.
Right, okay, okay.
So I don't really know where that worry comes from.
I got you, thanks.
I do think there's a worry about the airport folks trying to do another ballot measure, but I think that happens anyway, and we need to unite to defeat it.
Joe.
And then, but who are the next three?
Right, but let's line up Susan Jolene, Kathy Gentile, and Jonah Breslow.
Hi, folks, good evening, my name is Joe Patel, I'm a member of the Airport Commission for the last several years, I'm one of the founders of the Great Park Coalition, I'm a public interest attorney, spending most of my life working in the inner city, and I'm also a long-term resident of Sunset Park. I had some short, prepared remarks, but since I'm on the Airport Commission, I did want to share some information, which I'd be more than happy to send you folks, which is in regard to the threat of a potential ballot measure from aviation. And I've shared this with Mr. Zane and Mr. Soloff, just last week, we had coffee together and we discussed this. And the threat of aviation is real. For example, there are two electric vertical takeoff companies, Joby and Archer Aviation, they're the ones that want to do sort of the drone-like helicopters. They're very serious about moving into Santa Monica in the next year or two, they have a vision of having at least eight of those operating here by the time the Olympics. If you look at their hub, Santa Monica's right in the center of it. If you look at their public statements, they are very serious about coming in, they've come in front of the Airport Commission and told us specifically they have ambitious goals to be in the airport. Why do I believe them? Because Atlantic Aviation, which is the fixed carrier operator at the airport, they provide the ramp services, they submitted to the Airport Commission on January 25th this year a proposal to electrify the ramp to provide electricity to these EV tolls. It includes schematic drawings. This is a multimillion-dollar process, and if you think about it from a business perspective, why on earth would they be investing millions of dollars to electrify the ramp if they're planning to be out of business in two years? They're very serious about coming in here. There's another data point that I think you should consider, and it's another group of people. If you'd like...
What is the other group of people?
Okay, you'll have to wait until next time. No, the other folks, that is SLING Aviation, S-L-I-N-G. It is a fixed-wing electric airplane flight school, which announced just like a week ago that they're going to start up their operations. If you look at their public statements, it was in the Santa Monica Daily Press, I think it was at the end of March, I mean, end of April, like a week and a half ago, again, they've invested millions of dollars, they chose four locations in the state of California to do their investment, one of them, and the only one in LA County, was at Santa Monica Airport. If you look at what they're saying publicly, they're saying they're incredibly disappointed with the public officials who are not present at their grand opening, but they don't really care because they have a lot of money that they're planning to invest. So if you want to wonder, it's not my paranoia, my fear, if you just look at what they're saying, and more importantly, what they're doing, investing millions of dollars, I share with Mr. Gruber and other folks that these people are quite serious, and they're going to try to divide us, they're going to try to get Mr. Zane and myself, people who are supportive of housing, and people who are supportive of the environment, to fight each other so they can walk in, because there are a lot of people in the city who don't want any housing. That's not what most of our coalition wants, but that's what they're going to try to play upon. And if you'd like, I can send you those materials, I have them scanned, if you'd like, I can send them to the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Dr. Susan Jane, and I'm the Vice Chair of the Arts Commission and a geo-lead for the UC Master Gardener Program, and I'm a Sunset Park 20-year-plus resident, Clover Park is my park, and I'm on the Advisory Board of the Santa Monica Great Park Coalition. When I heard that the Santa Monica Airport conversion team would be presenting tonight, I wanted to stop by and say thank you. Thank you, Amber, Tony, Peter, company, for your outreach and for showing up, and most importantly, for listening. Back in '24, we made our voices heard, we voted overwhelmingly to close the airport and return this land to the community. What we asked for was very simple, a park. Over the past year, the SMAC team seems to be everywhere, I've run into them at the farmers' markets, city councils, libraries, public events, that December event was amazing, and recently, they presented to the Sustainability and the Arts Commission. Through all that outreach, presentations, conversations, and surveys, we've become familiar with what Measure C allows, the five guiding principles, and the overall timeline for that project. And I want to highlight something especially important, the planning process so far has been both transparent and accessible. These things we deeply appreciate, thank you. It has built trust and invited real participation from the community. With that foundation in place, last week, an arts working group of the Great Park Coalition submitted a letter of interest to the city. In it, we shared a vision for how arts and culture can help shape the future park, a vision rooted in nature, rooted in nature, a vision where arts and culture act as the connective tissue, linking the unique parts of the living park into a breathing cultural ecosystem. Thank you all for all that you've done so far, and I must say, and others have mentioned, if the ballot measure comes up and the airport comes back, I've had several of my neighbors said, I'm voting for the airport. If housing comes forward, I'm sorry, if housing comes forward, they'll say, it's a bait and switch, they're already ready for it, and I'm going to vote to keep the airport. Thank you.
My name's Kathy Gentile, I am a almost 40-year resident of Sunset Park. I have a young adult daughter who's gainfully employed and cannot afford to live in the neighborhood where she was raised, which is Sunset Park. We've lived in the same place since before she was born, because housing is not affordable for single people who make under $100,000 a year. I am hoping, but I don't think this is going to happen, that the airport land will be turned into housing. LC does not prohibit housing, but years ago, there was something called RENA, and I'm sorry, I don't remember what it stands for, but some of you do know what it stands for, said that the city needed to build over 8,000 units of housing. As a member of the League of Women Voters, we supported that. I don't think that's happened, there have not been 8,000 units of housing built since whenever this was written. So what is the city planning on doing about that? Are they going to continue to build affordable housing, whatever you want to call it, low-income housing? Is this another word for, we don't want people of color to be able to afford to live in Santa Monica? Okay, well, pardon my French, but screw that. My daughter is not a person of color, but she is a person, and she deserves a place to live, just as the people her age and under, she's almost 40, and under can't afford to live in Santa Monica. They're going out beyond West Los Angeles, beyond Palms, they're going way out and driving in to the city. Thank you. They're going way out and driving in to the city. Thank you.
Before Jonah, let's get the, can we get three more up behind Jonah?
Yeah.
Lynn.
Let's get, hold on a minute. Let's get Lupe.
Lupe Stevenson.
Liliana Espinoza, or Mendoza.
Lilliana Mendoza.
And Marvin Espinoza.
Maria. Maria? Maria Espinoza.
Maria.
Yeah. Are they all here? Okay, thanks. Great.
They may be gone.
Yeah, no, they're here.
Good evening. My name is Jonah Breslow. I'm here on behalf of Yonahir Local 11. I'm a former Santa Monica resident and a former worker here in Santa Monica. And, you know, I was unable to continue living in Santa Monica. It was too expensive. This was 10 years ago. So we're here to express concerns regarding what we believe is a flawed and inadequate procedure for soliciting the public's input regarding the potential uses of the Santa Monica Airport once it's decommissioned at the end of 2028. The city's plans for this land are of the utmost importance to our members, thousands of whom work or live in Santa Monica. Unfortunately, the process has failed to provide an effective means of participation for renters, for low-income people, people of color, and people whose primary language is not English, like many of our union members. And these issues have structurally impeded the ability of the public to express support for housing as a potential use of a portion of the airport land, even though access to affordable housing is clearly of significant interest to many in the Santa Monica community and including our members. So to name a few issues in particular, it was very hard for our members, and for any of us, really, to figure out how to do the survey in Spanish, which required clicking like this small globe in the corner, and none of the images were translated. And even if you went to the SMAC project website and went to the Spanish version, if you clicked on the link which was labeled wrong, it took you to the English survey. It was really hard to do it on a cellphone, which was difficult for our members who didn't have home computers. And then, you know, these questions about street connectivity and water features, which just didn't really resonate. I found them confusing. I have no idea what the street connectivity should be. It just felt like, you know, a Potemkin village of participation. The theater of participation without giving people meaningful options. And so we developed our own survey of questions about housing. We have 142 of our members who responded about whether or not they want housing, as well as their experiences with housing insecurity that I wanted to bring to the commission.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know if I can bring this up, and you can pass them around and take a look at some of our members, what they say.
Next person.
Lupe.
Lupe.
Yeah, that's me. Hi, my name is Lupe Stevenson. I've been living in Santa Monica for 28 years, working in Santa Monica for 25, working at the Fermont Miramar for 25 years. I live in one of those apartments, low income. And I have two kids. They can't even leave my house because they cannot afford it. And now, when this project that you guys say that you don't want to make in housing, low income, is, those kids are going to go homeless. And what are you going to do? You park? Maybe the homeless are going to park over there and you park. Please, support us, support, even if I'm brown. I still working in Santa Monica and working for you guys. Thank you.
Roberto, there was a mistake with the name. They put Liliana instead of my name.
Sorry?
Roberto, yeah.
But?
Yeah, they put Liliana Hernandez instead of my name, but I was the one that signed up for it. I went to grab pics up for the workers. They came here after work, so they need to eat.
No, no, I know. I'll just make a motion to hear, what's your name?
Roberto Masariegos.
Roberto, in lieu of Ms. Mendoza, is that all right? Yeah?
Thank you. Appreciate that. I asked her to put in my name. Good evening. My name is Roberto Masariegos. I'm an organizer here in Santa Monica. I also attend this school here to Santa Monica, but don't leave here because I can't afford it. The survey, I just want to start, first of all, look, there's a famous quote by Kobe Bryant, says like, you know, "How you going to be a member is very important, so don't take it lightly." And I think this city, once again, once again, because I've been working in this city for a long time, has the opportunity to lead the way, to be an example of what things can be in different cities. And we've done it with minimum wages and all these things. And you have another one in front of you. But I want to let you know that the survey, right, was by default only in English. The Spanish-language translation was extremely difficult to find on the website. As my colleague here said, we found it later, but it took a long time for us to figure that out. We couldn't really do it on the cellphone, so you had to get a laptop. So we do have members that live in Santa Monica that, you know, the time and being able to afford a laptop doesn't really go along with that. You know, we decided to take matters into our own hands, and in just one day, we did 140 surveys from workers that work and live here in Santa Monica as well as that don't live here in Santa Monica. You know, I'm here to say we can do both, right, but where am I to say that? I want to say, I did visit New York not long ago. I did go to Central Park. Central Park is, in one part, beautiful, but in another part, is what I think is going to happen at that place if we do a huge park, which is a lot of homeless people are going to get there, right? Because we don't have the houses, but we're building the space. And I know Central Park got this, you know, policing and everything, they don't allow them camping, but they still do it. I was there not long ago. Believe me, it's a good park, but it turns night and day. We do have the Santa Monica Mountains. We do have a lot of parks out here. I know we don't have the park that we're trying to vision with the, you know, the landing and bringing birds and all of that. But we have mountains, you know. We got to look at the real problem here, and that's housing. That's about it.
Get the last three more names. Matthew.
Matthew, is it Horn?
Haven, Horn.
Matthew Horn.
Yeah.
And then Lilian Villafana.
Lorena Villafana? And that's it? Okay.
Hola, mi nombre es Maria Espinoza, y estoy aquí para expresar mi preocupación por el proceso de divulgación del proyecto de conversión del aeropuerto de Santa Mónica. Trabajo en el hotel Santa Mónica Sanborn como Londrin atendan. La reunión presencial del sábado 17 de mayo podría ser una mejor manera de la complicada encuesta en línea para conocer la opinión de algunas personas de clase trabajadora. Pero me preocupa que los trabajadores de la hostelería como yo no estén disponibles.
So this is Maria Espinoza. I'm here to express my concerns about the outreach process for the Santa Monica Airport Conversion Project. I work at the Sanborn Hotel in the laundry area. You know, this in-person meeting on Saturday, the 17th, might be a better way than the complicated online survey to hear from some working-class people.
Ya que los sábados son algunos de nuestros días de mayor actividad, probablemente tenga que trabajar ese día. No puedo faltar al trabajo para darme mi opinión al respecto. Me preocupa que escuchen a más propietarios de viviendas, jubilados y profesionales que a personas como yo que trabajan los fines de semana.
But I'm concerned that some hospitality workers like me will not be available on Saturday because Saturdays are some of our busiest days. I will likely have to work that day. I cannot miss work that day to give my input on this. And I worry you will hear from more homeowners, retirees, and professionals than people like me who work on the weekends.
Durante el proceso de desarrollo de los distritos 4, 5, y Arizona, la ciudad celebró algunas reuniones nocturnas y en español para hablar con los trabajadores del hotel sobre este proyecto.
During the fourth and fifth in Arizona development process, the city held some meetings at night and in Spanish to talk with hotel workers about that project.
Esa fue una medida importante para garantizar que escucharan todas las voces en el proceso de divulgación. Estas reuniones de la comisión de planificación son nocturnas. Pero son largas y nos cuesta esperar aquí sin saber cuándo podremos hablar después de un día largo de trabajo. Por favor, consideren organizar reuniones específicas para los trabajadores de hostelería de Santa Mónica para explicar nuestra opinión sobre el futuro del aeropuerto. Gracias.
Those meetings at night were important measures to ensure that all kinds of voices could be heard in the outreach process. These Planning Commission meetings are at night, but they are long, and it is hard for us to wait here and not know when we might speak after a long day at work. Please consider dedicated meetings for Santa Monica's hospitality workers to explain our views on the future of the airport. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, honorable members of the Planning Commission. My name is Matthew Hom, and I'm an organizer with CLU, Clergy and Laity, United for Economic Justice. Since our founding in 1996, we have shown up with the workers and the communities and the renters of this beloved city to fight for economic, racial, immigrant justice. And we're so proud to be here in solidarity with the Cloverfield Commons Coalition and everyone from our community who is advocating for housing as well as a park in the Santa Monica Airport site. So you've already heard from these hospitality workers and other community leaders why we've had so many reasons to be concerned about the Phase 3A outreach process. But I wanted to highlight one specific reason why we feel this way that is also worth consideration, which is that there wasn't any way for workers who make Santa Monica function but who can't afford to live here in the city to identify that fact, to identify the fact that even though they don't live here, they do work here. They weren't able to express that particular reason why they support housing as well as a park on the airport site. And this was really a critical error that meant that the survey couldn't easily highlight the views of such an essential constituency for the city. The working poor are so essential for Santa Monica's success, so why shouldn't they have a voice in this process? And I'm not just speaking about the amazing hotel workers of Santa Monica. What about the nurses, the teachers, and city staff, and so on? The housing crisis affects so many of us. We need a process that engages our entire beloved community. And with the time I have, I just want to mention that on April 15th, so many of us came together, faith leaders, community organizations, and so on, to advocate, speak out for housing, commemorating Holy Week and Passover from our diverse faith traditions and the needs of the youth and so many of us to have this housing. Thank you so much, and have a blessed evening.
Thank you.
Hello, everybody. Mi nombre es Lorena, y estoy aquí para expresar mi frustración con el proceso de divulgación del proyecto de conversión del aeropuerto de Santa Mónica.
Hi, my name's Lorena, and I'm here to express my frustration with the outreach process for the Santa Monica Airport Conversion Project.
He trabajado como trabajadora de áreas públicas en un hotel aquí en Santa Mónica durante tres años, pero mi esposo tiene más de 30 años trabajando aquí en Santa Mónica.
So I've worked as a public areas attendant in a hotel here in Santa Monica for three years, but my husband has worked here in Santa Monica for 30 years.
La encuesta fue extremadamente larga y compleja, lo que desalentó la participación de la clase trabajadora como yo. Tras recopilar información demográfica, las primeras preguntas se centraron en cuestiones técnicas como la forma de fuentes de agua y cuántas conexiones de calles deberían haber con las zonas vecinas.
So this survey was extremely long and complex, which discouraged participation from working people like me. After gathering demographic information, early questions focused on technical issues, which is the shape of water features and exactly how many street connections there should be to neighboring areas.
Pero todos sabemos que los debates más importantes son sobre vivienda y espacios verdes. Apoyo a la vivienda y un parque en el aeropuerto. Pero me preocupa que otras personas no hayan completado la encuesta para que la ciudad sepa que piensan lo mismo.
So we all know that the biggest debates are about housing and green space. And I support housing and a park at the airport, but I'm worried other people may not have made it through the survey to let the city know they feel the same way.
Por favor, revisen los resultados de nuestra encuesta y vean cómo se sienten realmente los trabajadores de Santa Mónica. Yo, más que ser una trabajadora en Santa Mónica, soy una residente aquí en Santa Mónica por más de 19 años.
All right, so, you know, please look at our survey results, which we're figuring out. Maybe we'll get you guys some summaries, and see how working people in Santa Monica really feel. And also, Lorena, she said, yeah, I've lived here. More than being a worker, I'm also a Santa Monica resident for more than 19 years.
Thank you.
Thank you. Perhaps we can take a 10-minute break?
Is that all the public comment?
What?
Is that all the public comment?
Is that, yeah, that's all the public comment. Yeah, that's all the public comment.
Yep.
I have a question.
I have many questions.
You have questions for the staff?
Should we just go down the line, one direction or another?
Yeah.
Jim?
Jim?
I mean, I don't really have questions. Mine will be very quick.
Commissioner Reese?
Yeah. Thank you for the presentation and for the listening to all the public comments. We appreciate that. I appreciate it just because I'm, you know, learning more and more about where the vision is and how it's going, how it's going forward. But I still get caught up on the economic sides of this, and I want to hear a little bit more about how you're, what you're looking at in terms of funding for, at least just for the park. Because I just don't, it's, this is a huge opportunity to have a beautiful park, but I just don't see a city in our, in our position right now being able to finance something like this. So anything more you can enlighten me on what you're thinking about for economics and what studies are still to come, I would appreciate.
I would be delighted, too. So we are looking at a variety of different funding mechanisms, tools, sources to fund the park, some of the uses and experiences that people have asked for. We're calling it a capital stack, so if you can imagine sort of a vertical column of different sedimentary layers where we have public philanthropy, we have value capture, we have revenue generation, we have ticketed, leasable events and spaces. Grants, you know, anything, special financing districts, tax increment financing, Melrose districts, things of that nature. That is all happening in the background as we're sort of assessing the landscape of financing tools. When we have a clearer view of what the program is for the three scenarios, then we can begin to assign the strategies for financing certain components and begin to develop implementation timeframes. And that becomes particularly acute when we go from three scenarios down to the preferred scenario, which of course would be the sort of the final hybridized version that has enjoyed community input, another round with you all as well as other boards and commissions and the city council. And at that point, we'll do a very detailed and scrutinous financial analysis and begin to really draw straight lines from components of the park to their financing mechanisms, try to develop some type of implementation timeframe, but it's really going to be based on what the program is. And it may end up being less of an implementation, like phasing approach that we see in other plans and more of sort of like a, like a constitution that we use to take advantage of opportunities that may arise throughout the 20 to 50, 75-year time cycle of the park's construction slash neighborhood development. I'm going to pass on the rest of my comments right now, but I might reserve the right to come back with another. Oh, here, this is, I think I remember the last time we talked about this, is you're doing this envi, you have to put together, you have to do an environmental just to close the, close the... We do.
Not to close it.
Not, not to clo...
For what it will become.
I think when we, when we close the airport, it becomes something else. And so, yes, we have to, we have to do environmental, kind of for both.
Yeah, I was under the impression from one of your last presentations we heard here is that there was a certain amount of environmental you had to do just for the closure itself, and then the concept was since I'm in that process?
You said otherwise, the Stafford...
Yes, so initially, I think when we came the last time, this, what had gone, what we had discovered in some questions that came up, and I believe it was the Airport Commission or one of the other commissions asked, do we need EIR to close the airport? But because the decision to close the airport already happened with the consent decree, we don't have to do an EIR for that. It's, we have to do an EIR for what will happen after the closure, but not to close it.
Okay, well, that, that last part makes sense, but I thought I had heard you had to do something before.
Yeah, I think I was confused about the question. The other, the, the council made that decision in 2017 to close the airport, and we've now confirmed with the city attorney's office that that was the decision. The SEQA we will use to convert the use, which is also, a part of that is also ceasing operations at the, at the airport. So in order for SEQA to happen, we have to have the program, and we have to understand the parameters. And we've given ourselves a two-year timeframe post conclusion of this framework planning process to do the SEQA work. And we will be studying alternatives. If that was another follow-up question, of course, we'll be studying a variety of alternatives.
Okay, and you guys haven't, last we talked, I think you hadn't gotten very far into the, kind of the testing of, of the, you know, the environment out there because it was still an operational...
We have done some limited, I think Phase 1, they're referred to, sampling. The city attorney's office has been working with us on that aspect of assessing the contamination. And the results, I think, are in, I don't think we have finalized the results yet. Yeah, but I think we all presume there's going to be something that we're going to have to contend with in the years following closure. Okay, thank you.
My, my questions also center around how we're going to pay for the, the park on an ongoing basis. I think I've said before, I think that there's going to be funding available, I think, to build the park. I think that's something a little easier to understand. What I'm, what I'm, what I'm focused on is how do we keep this park from impacting the city's revenues? And I, I have a question. I know we're approaching, I think the next phase is to present kind of three design surets or options, and from that, we're going to take an amalgam of those and create a final option. Are we going to have, in, in order to, I think, review each of those different designs, I think it would be really helpful to have a price tag associated with each.
Yeah.
Not only to build the park and create it, but also to sustain it? And I think that will, are we going to have that option available? Are we doing the studies now to know what the ongoing costs are going to be for each of these different options?
Yes. Yes, we are. So we have a very, we have a sizable subconsultant team on this project, Sasaki being the prime, and then we have HRNA, which has worked with the Planning Commission and with the City of Santa Monica for a long time. They are the consultant team that is identifying the rough order magnitude costs at this point for the three scenarios, the conceptual scenarios. They're looking at the capital costs, they're looking at the ongoing operations and maintenance, and that includes also like not just, you know, adaptive reuse, leasable spaces, some of the development you saw on the housing slides, ticketed events, and also assessing sort of the philanthropic well within Los Angeles for this type of project. So they, they are bringing all of that together. The council is very clear that they don't want us to come back with options that are infeasible and sort of sell a dream to the community that is not achievable.
Right.
And so it is, I think we will come right down to the wire on the 17th of having, you know, finished some rough order magnitude analysis of that, because the layer survey closed on the 20...
Closed on the, just past Monday.
Monday, which was the fifth?
Oh, wait, sorry.
Was it last Monday?
Last Monday.
Last Monday, and we only have about a month of time before we publish the scenarios. And the scenarios are informed by the layers' information. So everybody's kind of spinning plates right now, working it out.
But with HRNA's experience in pricing, capital, operating and maintenance of parks, as the, as Sasaki works concurrently and taking the information from the survey, saying, hey, we're kind of steering based on those results that we're probably going to have X amount of this, HRNA is able to say, okay, we'll tap away at like this amount of that is approximately this capital...
I have a question.
I have many questions.
You have questions for the staff?
Should we just go down the line, one direction or another? Jim?
I mean, I don't really have questions. Mine will be very quick.
Commissioner Reese?
Yeah. Thank you for the presentation and for the listening to all the public comments. We appreciate that. I appreciate it just because I'm, you know, learning more and more about where the where the vision is and how it's it's going, how it's going forward. But I still get caught up on the economic sides of this. And I want to hear a little bit more about how you're, what you're looking at in terms of funding for, at least just for the park. Because I just don't, it's, this is a huge opportunity to have a beautiful park, but I just don't see a city in our, in our position right now being able to finance something like this. So anything more you can enlighten me on where, what you're thinking about for economics and what studies are still to come, I would appreciate.
I would be delighted to. So we are looking at a variety of different funding mechanisms, tools, sources to fund the park, some of the uses and experiences that people have asked for. We're calling it a capital stack. So if you can imagine a sort of a vertical column, different sedimentary layers, where we have public philanthropy, we have value capture, we have revenue generation, we have ticketed, leasable events and spaces. Grants, you know, any, anything in special financing districts, tax increment financing, Melrose districts, things of that nature. That is all happening in the background as we're sort of assessing the landscape of financing tools. When we have a clearer view of what the program is for the three scenarios, then we can begin to assign the strategies for financing certain components and begin to develop implementation timeframes. And that becomes particularly acute when we go from three scenarios down to the preferred scenario, which of course would be the sort of the final hybridized version that has enjoyed community input, another round with, with you all, as well as other boards and commissions and the city council. And at that point, we'll do a very detailed and scrutinous financial analysis and begin to really draw straight lines from components of the park to their financing mechanisms, try to develop some type of implementation timeframe. But it's really going to be based on what the program is. And it may end up being less of an implementation, like phasing approach that we see in other plans and more of sort of like a, like a constitution that we use to take advantage of opportunities that, that may arise throughout the 20 to 50, 75 year time cycle of the park's construction slash neighborhood development. I'm going to pass on the rest of my comments right now, but I might reserve the right to come back with another. Oh, here, this is, I think I remember the last time we talked about this is, is you're doing this envi- you have to put together, you have to do an environmental just to close the, close the. We do.
Not to close it.
Not, not to.
For what it will become.
I think be, when we, when we close the airport, it becomes something else. And so, yes, we have to, we have to do environmental, kind of for both.
Yeah, I was under the impression from one of your last presentations we heard here is that there was a certain amount of environmental you had to do just for the closure itself. And then the concept was, since I'm in that process.
You said otherwise, the Stafford.
Yes, so initially, I think when we came the last time, this, what had gone, what we had discovered in some questions that came up, and I believe it was the Airport Commission or one of the other commissions asked, do we need EIR to close the airport? But because the decision to close the airport already happened with the consent decree, we don't have to do an EIR for that. It's, we have to do an EIR for what will happen after the closure, but not to close it.
Okay, well, that, that last part makes sense, but I thought I had heard you had to do something before.
Yeah, I, I think I was confused about the, the question. The other, the, the council made that decision in 2017 to close the airport. We've now confirmed with the city attorney's office that that was the decision. The SEQA we will use to convert the use, which is also, a part of that is also ceasing operations at the, at the airport. So in order for SEQA to happen, we have to have the program and we have to understand the parameters. And we've given ourselves a two-year timeframe post conclusion of this framework planning process to do the SEQA work. And we will be studying alternatives. If that was another follow-up question, of course, we'll be studying a variety of alternatives.
Okay, and you guys haven't, last we talked, I think you hadn't gotten very far into the, kind of the testing of, of the, you know, the environment out there because it was still an operational.
We have done some limited, I think, phase one, they're referred to, sampling. The city attorney's office has been working with us on that aspect of assessing the contamination. And the results, I think, are in, I don't think we have finalized the results yet. Yeah, but I, I think we, we all presume there's going to be something that we're going to have to contend with in the years following closure. Okay, thank you.
My, my questions also center around how we're going to pay for the, the park on an ongoing basis. I think I've said before, I think that the, there's going to be funding available, I think, to build the park. I think that's something a little easier to understand. What I'm, what I'm, what I'm focused on is, how do we keep this park from impacting the city's revenues? And I, I have a question. I know we're approaching, I think the next phase is to present kind of three design surets or options. And from that, we're going to take an, like an amalgam of those and create a final option. Are we going to have, in, in order to, I think, review each of those different designs, I think it would be really helpful to have a price tag associated with each.
Yeah.
Not only to build the park and create it, but also to sustain it. And I think that will, are we going to have that option available? Are we doing the studies now to know what the ongoing costs are going to be for each of these different options?
Yes. Yes, we are. So we have a very, we have a sizable subconsultant team on this project, Sasaki being the prime. And then we have HRNA, which has worked with the Planning Commission and with the City of Santa Monica for a long time. They are the consultant team that is identifying the rough order magnitude costs at this point for the three scenarios, the conceptual scenarios. They're looking at the capital costs, they're looking at the ongoing operations and maintenance. And that includes also, like, not just, you know, adaptive reuse, leasable spaces, some of the development you saw on the housing slides, ticketed events, and, and also assessing sort of the, the philanthropic well within Los Angeles for this type of project. So they, they are bringing all that together. The council is very clear that they don't want us to come back with options that are infeasible and sort of sell a dream to the community that is not achievable.
Right.
And so it is, I think we will come right down to the wire on the 17th of having, you know, finished some rough order magnitude analysis of that. Because the layer survey closed on the 20.
Closed on the, just past Monday.
Monday, which was the fifth.
Oh, wait, sorry.
Was it last Monday?
Last Monday.
Last Monday. And we only have about a month of time before we publish the scenarios. And the scenarios are informed by the layers information. So everybody's kind of spinning plates right now, working it out.
But with HRNA's experience in pricing, capital, operating and maintenance of parks, as the, as Sasaki works concurrently and taking the information from the survey, saying, hey, we're kind of steering based on those results that we're probably going to have X amount of this, HRNA is able to say, okay, we'll tap away at like, this amount of that is approximately this capital cost, this operation, the maintenance. So as Peter said, these things are kind of happening in lockstep as decisions are made. HRNA is working concurrently, so again, it gets down to the wire. But at a certain point, there is the, the scenario and the correlating amounts.
So, so three scenarios, three rough kind of budgets for ongoing maintenance for each. And then we've, we're also talking about revenue generation and how to cover those ongoing costs. Will we also have, when we, when we look at these three different designs and each are going to have their own source of revenue generation, I would assume, are they going to have, you know, an estimate of how much each type of land use could actually generate? To, are they going to have a budget for, okay, revenue as well? Not just cost, but actual revenues?
Yeah, I think that factors into the financial.
Yeah. Okay.
And we've also had great conversations, as an example, with California State Parks, who manages the historic park in Chinatown, who does, does large-scale events. And we connected them with HRNA to help them understand what their revenue generating potential is on some of their quarterly events that they have to help support the ongoing maintenance that stems from not only refurbishing the land that was used for the event, but maintaining those, those lands so that they are creating a hospital environment to host more events.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, and the last piece I'll add is that there, then there's, we're also talking with our municipal partners about the ways in which their operations might shift.
Okay.
Based on the, you know, the large upscaling of the city's park network. And, you know, and also like public safety, given that surveillance is a big concern that we've heard throughout the community, how do we keep that place secure?
Yeah.
So there's a lot of, not just costs, but like sort of investment in human capital as well that we're considering.
Are we, are we to assume that the city of Santa Monica is wholly responsible for the ongoing maintenance and support of this park? Or are you seeing other sources out there, maybe at the county level or even with the city of Los Angeles that could provide help?
It's possible, yeah. I think at, at this scale, this is definitely a regional endeavor. I should mention that, you know, to the governance question, the city managing it is one option, but we're also looking at perhaps like a nonprofit, like friends of.
Okay.
Organization that could shoulder the, the burden a little bit. And that's also a task that's under HRNA's.
Yeah.
Scope.
Yeah, I, I'll, I'll just say real quickly, I do support the idea of housing being an element in the design of this park. But I do think that in order to, for us to put together a good case for that housing, it needs to be shown as a, not only a social good in terms of creating affordable housing, but as a way to support the park itself. And so housing needs to be seen in, in that context. It's not housing just for the sake of housing. But housing at all income levels as a way to support the bigger plan of building this park. I think if this housing is seen as being in support of, of a well-maintained park that the community really wants as an amenity, that's how I would position this housing, this housing discussion. But I'm, I'm in support of, of, of that being a, a really well-integrated use in this park. So, thank you.
Peter, I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
This, tonight was the first time I've heard that the avi- aviation industry is planning a big, either a ballot measure or something to defeat the whole thing. Have you heard more about this? And what is the city, what can the city do to prevent this?
Well, I think there's always been, and Tony chime in too, I think there's, there has always been an assumption that if we were to present option, you know, i- if the process provided an opening for the aviation community to insert their agenda, they would try. And so I think the concern has been broadcast over the course of several years that we need to be extremely careful to not give the aviation industry the opportunity to support another ballot measure. And that's where that 2028 timeline comes into play. And, and we, we are carefully considering it. We're working with all levels of local government to understand and assess the threat level and also to navigate our path through it, right? I'll say that as a, you know, somebody that worked in the planning department for a long time on a lot of the long-range projects over the past 15 years, you know, it takes a long time to adjudicate some of these choices. And, and, and because of the 2028 timeframe, we're kind of on a fast train to come to some decisions. So I think we are at a point where we need to be really cautious about how, how we proceed. And, and we're, and we're doing our very best to like, understand what the risks are in moving forward and, and being very careful with the, the housing discussion because it is a, a new input into the process.
Commissioner Chalk.
Oh, I thought we were going down the line. So, thank you again. So just going down on the, the question of, of legal obligations, at what point does the airport property attract the attention of HCD with respect to our RENA obligations?
Not yet. The answer is not yet.
But is, are we, are we tracking?
We are, and in fact, we are in communication with HCD, trying to understand the Surplus Land Act better. And so that is a conversation we're having with, in coordination with our city attorney's office. Because part of the strategy is really trying to address all of, all community preferences in a very sort of democratic way and design a strategy to satisfy the community to the largest extent possible. And that involves really understanding the ways in which the SLA works, the ways in which you can enact certain district or zoning measures to conserve portions of land.
Right.
And then what the process is for that disposition, if you, you know, if that's the circumstance that you find yourself in at some point. So I think they're aware of us, we're certainly aware of them. We have a legal team on the third floor that continues to monitor and assess and advise.
And, and I would also, you know, sort of note on that, that there is a state of California and a state of California government and set of priorities that extends beyond HCD. In other words, without, you know, there is a housing crisis. There is also an open space issue. There are also other concerns. And so I, I do, you know, it sounds like, and correct me if I'm wrong, that the city is making use of all its relationships with the state to prioritize, as you say, to prioritize conservation and parkland creation, which is also a priority of the state of California. So if that's, I hope that's correct, okay?
Yeah, that is, that is correct. And, you know, we're, we're looking at, we went to speak with somebody from the Bologna watershed, which receives, I think, something like $48 million a year that they have to distribute across their, their watershed. But a portion of it is in Santa Monica. And they're, they're kind of like the biggest bang for your buck type of organization, so.
Oh, that's interesting.
That is another avenue for us to pursue and considering ways in which we can conserve land, fund, fund a capital improvement on it, et cetera.
Okay, and then I'm going to renew my question of every time we hear this is, how are we thinking beyond the airport parcels themselves in terms of what may or may not be happening in what's currently zoned as the business district, currently owned by a single owner? What, you know, as I asked Denny Zane, right? Like, thinking about this as Centinela to 25th Street or even further west, right? To, to, to 23rd and Airport Avenue to Ocean Park. And recognizing that, for example, any conversation about housing, as important as it is, is a conversation that has a context because there are other parties potentially interested in developing housing and incurring affordable housing production obligations along the way. And currently, I mean, currently, and I genuinely hope it stays that way, the city still has some discretionary authority for parcels bigger than an acre. So, you know, how are we making use of those tools to, to get the park in its most livable, usable, workable, transitable context?
I'll start by saying that I agree with you on taking the long view and, and stretching out the boundaries to Ocean Park Boulevard and Ocean, Centinela to 25th. I mean, if you recall, the general plan talks about exactly that, like a coordinated.
Right.
Specific plan, neighborhood project, where we begin to evaluate the connections through both properties, reimagine Ocean Park Boulevard. That's not the way we're doing this. And I don't blame the business park for wanting to decouple from this highly sensitive political city process that may or may not require a ballot measure. That being said, we are, we've begun to meet with BXP. Everyone's kind of pretty, playing their cards pretty close to their chest right now, but at least begin to anticipate each other's moves. Our, our process is completely transparent. So they will see where our desire lines are written for the roadway network. They will see where we want to accentuate gateways. They will see where we have, you know, concentrated certain uses or experiences. And all of that is, is not really designed for, for them, but it's really to, to broadcast what our intentions are in terms of a sort of conceptual planning. We've also met with the city of LA several times because that, there's that portion of the land, 17 acres, that's on LA's side of the fence. And we met with.
West LA.
West LA Council District, their, I can't remember what they're called.
CD 11?
Oh, yes, sorry, yeah, CD, CD 11, right? And I think eventually we'll begin to have meetings with, with supervisors. And we talked about meeting with SCAG.
SMC?
SMC, I don't think we have, I don't think we have. They also have plans that they've published, so we know what they're up to.
They've thought about housing too there.
Yeah, I believe that they're.
Student housing, yeah.
Like two-story student housing on, on their part of the airport.
Having people, I mean, that's to our advantage, right? If there are a bunch of students living there and potentially spending time and money at the park. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And, and, and because of that critical mass and, you know, that, that tends to inform the way in which we're beginning to organize the site in all of the three different concepts. So did you, you took the survey, right?
Uh, I went.
Or you read through it?
I went through, I studied it deeply and then.
Yeah, yeah, there's some moves in there that I, I hope we get a chance to explain to you at the.
Yes, please.
May 17th workshop.
Okay.
But it, it, the, there is like, there is community input, there is city policy. And then we have, you know, professional staff that are helping us design these concepts. And there's also regional plans, you know, the RTP, we have the sustainable communities stuff. There's a lot of input into this work. So as we collaborate more with our neighbors, I hope that we can find an understanding and, and not foreclose upon each other's opportunities.
There used to be an organization called the LA, the Regional Open Space and Housing Collaborative, LA ROSA. I went to one of their, I mean, I went to at least one of their meetings, super helpful in terms of thinking about how you do housing and open space together in a way that is mutually supporting. They weren't focused on the West Side, but, but there was, there's quite a lot of thought. And given the kind of density that I'm seeing being proposed, it may be worth looking at, you know, some of the best, best practices that they identified. And this was back in 2018, 2019. L A R O S A H, the Los Angeles region, I want to say, Regional Open Space and Housing Collaborative, something like that?
Okay, I'll Google it.
Yeah. Thanks.
You're done?
I am.
Okay. I just wanted to bring up, because Sean mentioned the business park. I do know, and I've heard this from several sources, that they're talking about a lot of housing on that, on that property, on the properties. They actually even have a project now, I think, in the pipeline across the street from Clover Park or about to be in the pipeline. So we're talking about lots and lots and lots of housing. The loose does not require a joint specific plan unless it's commercial, and it's not commercial. It's residential. And it's all market rate, you know, with, except the inclusionary units. But it's generally a market rate project. So in that regard, I, I don't know if you're looking at the tax increment financing district tool, including the business park, could be very lucrative.
Yes.
Yes. And that would take some of the burden off the housing, having to pay for the maintenance of the park. But as someone who's actually trying to build a park in Hollywood, God be with you. My other question is like, for one thing, I understand the survey is very important as are the 150 letters that we got from the people here tonight. How do we fit in that? I mean, what is our input in terms, you know, vis a vis all the survey stuff you've gotten?
You mean commission-specific input?
Yes.
Well, just in the months of April and May, we have 17 night meetings.
No, my question is how important is it?
Oh, it's, it's important. You're, you are.
Why are we sitting here?
Advisory to the council, so we take your input very seriously. And we are taking a lot of input from the council's boards and commissions.
Okay, let, let me go on record that I really want to see some housing on the site. And how much it is, I, you know, I don't know what it is. But I think it would be unconscionable to waste public land and not do some housing on that property. And in terms of HCD, the current housing element and RENA are irrelevant. It's really the next cycle of the housing element.
Yes.
And if we have as big a RENA as we have this time and we say to, and we basically densified all the city we wanted to densify, what are we going to do? And we're going to say, well, except that we have this 200-acre park. So, you know, that's, we're going to do that, but the housing, you know. So that's just something to think about for you guys.
I understand.
The other question is, who, who is doing the EIR on the reuse of the land?
I don't think we have a consultant for that yet. We have a separate pot of money that we are holding in reserves for the time when we understand what the project is.
And, and how specific, if, for example, the housing option is the one that people vote for, and I don't know if that's going to happen, how detailed does that have to be before you can do an EIR?
Maybe Jane and Heidi can help me out on this, but my understanding is that we need to establish maximum parameters. So we would have to, if, if the question's about housing, I think we'd have to understand unit count, general location, the ways in which people.
Bedrooms?
Yeah, the, the, the road. The mix, the road network.
Right, right, not income mix, but bedroom mix.
But I don't need, I don't think we need to like, understand the building typology.
The what, I'm sorry?
The building typology, what type of building.
I'm asking because would this suffice as a specific plan to be incorporated into the loose? And if not, why are we doing it?
I mean, I think the, the process as laid out, it may end up being a specific plan, you know, right? It's obviously, that's maybe where it, it ends up, you know? I think the timing of it speaks to, you know, 2029. I mean, that's basically the sort of like expiration date, if you will, of the current loose we have, you know? So there'll be the confluence of the new loose, the seventh cycle housing element and the closure of the airport kind of all happening around the same time. You know, so I think it'll be an opportunity to obviously look at, you know, where this fits into kind of the citywide vision and, you know, I think revisit some of the commitments in the loose with respect to this property because we obviously know a lot more now, you know, than we did in 2010.
My, my question goes to, I assume that the property is going to have to rezone.
It will need zoning.
And, and if we don't have a specific plan, how do we rezone it?
No, I mean, I think that you, yeah, I mean, I mean, I think that's, that's the idea is, I guess it just depends, you know, on like how the scenarios plan out. And that's what I mean. I don't, I don't think that we were presupposing an outcome of what, what deliverables at the end of this.
I'm just like with the process and how it all fits with.
In my mind, I feel like we're, we're doing.
Yeah, I, I think that's the piece, I'm like, it doesn't have to be a specific.
It doesn't have to, but it, but it may well be.
Yeah.
Right, like, I think what, we're not trying to get to the level of specificity right now about what the widths of the streets are, what type of trees we're planting in the parkway. Or what paving material the plazas are made out of.
But there's going to be an EIR done, whatever it is you come up with.
The EIR will be done on the program. I, I think of it as, this will be a sort of program-level EIR for a master plan that may enjoy the detail of a specific plan in a subsequent phase.
And finally, this question came up at council some time ago. What is the impact of the requirements of the Surplus Property Act or surplus land? What is the impact of the requirements of the Surplus Property Act or Surplus Lands Act and and Measure LC? Because the land, the Surplus Property Act requires affordable housing as being one of the priorities for disposition of surplus property. With LC, we couldn't do that.
So I think Mr. James can confirm this, but I believe that is what he was speaking about with the city exploring how the Surplus Lands Act would intersect with this airport closure process. It's actually quite complicated and there's lots of different overlapping regulations, so I think that's being studied. But you are correct, the general rule is is that, you know, you offer up land prior, you know, as the first option is affordable housing when it's being disposed of. But again, there's a lot more complication to that, and I think that's really what the city is trying to understand as as part of this whole planning process with respect to the closure and future use.
So the question is whether LC supervises the surplus land act or vice versa?
In part.
In part, right. I think that from the state's perspect perspective, LC does not override state law.
Well, that's a problem, isn't it?
Well, it, but it's not, as Heidi mentioned, it's not that simple.
It's not that simple?
It's not.
Nothing ever is.
Yeah. I wish we had more time to to walk you through the details, but it is.
Okay, I just want to go on the record that I support housing and a park and and maybe fifty fifty is the way to go. And I know that people have been proposing three thousand units, I don't know if that's realistic or not. I mean, it depends on the capacity and then also the infrastructure costs. I mean, who's going to pay for the, you know, the water and the power and the sewage and the streets? I mean, that's, it could be a mellow rose upon, but the property owners pay that. If it's affordable housing, there's no chance of that, so who pays for it?
Right, those are all questions that we're asking ourselves as we go through the process.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you both for your presentation. I really appreciate your work on this amazing project. I have a few questions, I'm going to try to keep it brief. I think you mentioned that your current direction is to study housing among the scenarios that you're looking forward to, but I just want to clarify that in the scenarios that you're putting together, whether housing will be part of at least one of the scenarios.
Yes, the direction was that at least one scenario should study housing and at least one is a no vote option.
I see. So building on that then, since, as you mentioned, it's a long process before you get to implementation, could you walk me through how, if, for example, housing ends up being part of the preferred scenario, how that plays into the timeline with regard to dealing with a ballot measure, et cetera? And the timing of it relative to to other factors that are going on with CQ, et cetera?
Well, I think with the housing, it becomes it's a very, housing has always been a complex question internally. The the process, I think, will always be, again, collecting the information that we get from the community in terms of, as Peter had mentioned earlier, is like a sense of what the scale the community is comfortable with first. From there, the, as we move into the preferred scenario, I think we will always have this parallel conversation as to not only what the overall composition of a park plus housing approach would be, but also studying continually, like, okay, well, what's the next layer of information that must be layered on when we talk about housing? Because as Peter mentioned before, we're not looking at typologies or anything like that right now. We're just kind of looking at general location, general scale within a hundred and ninety-two acres. As we move to a preferred scenario and in in your example, that we we have a scenario, a preferred scenario direction that has to include housing. Okay, so we've already introduced the idea that housing exists on the airport, good. We've already introduced the idea that housing exists on the airport at relatively this size. As we start to develop the rest of the park, we will also correlate a design that gets us to the the level of information that goes into the EIR, which will be, what was the phrase, the the maximum allowable?
Parameter.
Maximum parameter. So with that goes, okay, well, what is what is the right size of the blocks within that area that the community has already said they're comfortable with the housing being? So is it a sixty by sixty or two hundred by two hundred? How tall are we starting to look at now? Within those blocks, how much housing fits in that area? How much of those units can afford to pay for X amount of area on the park? So those two things, housing plus park, will run in parallel as more and more information is integrated into the plan.
So I think I heard in the previous presentation that phasing is going to be part of all of this that you're talking about, right? So is it conceivable that as you perceive it, looking at scenarios, if the scenario involves housing that requires a ballot measure, that it could be put in a later phase of the project without necessarily delaying implementation to some extent on other portions of the site?
I I think that the best response to your line of questioning is that we just, we don't, we don't have a clear view of how how it works with the ballot measure, i- if that is in fact where we end up. Because everything that the speaker said earlier tonight is absolutely correct. Like, the priority really is on airport closure. Even though that has been decided, we want to, we want to protect our ability to do that. And so at, since housing is a relatively new input as as a central theme in the planning process, I don't, I don't think that we have a great answer for you at this point and how it actually works as we approach the twenty eight timeframe. It's a very political question, and it's going to require a lot of work from everybody here in the city to figure out if and how we do it.
I have two quick.
So as a related point, though, since implementation is going to take a long time, I presume part of your study is going to be looking at interim uses as well during the, during during that time period?
Yes, and and if you recall, within the, the, one of the options, when it spoke about the active uses as an example, the iteration that noted the the runway as recreation, it was just the gray zone. It gets to that conversation about day one, people want activity. Day one, we might not be able to afford that, but day one, we might be able to program something within that site as an option. And then it looks to, again, establishing a precedent for critical mass at that site. Because as Peter mentioned, the 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 conversation that is on everyone's mind is safety within our open spaces. So when you have an area like the airport, that's a hundred and ninety-two acres and it closes, and what happens there? We need to find ways to create interim program to help enliven those spaces. So we've already begun the conversations internally about like what those could be. Is it riding bikes on the runway on a regular basis? Is it taking some successful program that has occurred in other parks in our history and bringing them to the airport on a regular basis, like movie nights in the park, movie nights on the airport? Those sorts of things to help activate it and in some respects, continue this level of letters of interest, if you will, as people start to see more and more program happening, they want to get more and more involved. They want to know how to get more and more involved. We have a a path forward in saying, this is what we're charting. This is what we like to see. Do you want to participate? Here's what we need to do.
Well, thank you for that. I appreciate that some of these questions are hard to answer right now, but I think I do want to say that that in general, I really support the idea of a balanced mix of uses on a site of this size. And I do think that it would be a pity if it is limited in some way just to one use or the other. And I think it would take a broad range of uses to make something like this work.
I just have two quick things. I forgot to mention, and you may already know this, but with the tax increment financing district, the state allows up to twenty-five percent of their revenues to be used for affordable housing. So that would be a way to help with the housing production. The other thing, I don't know if you're familiar with Village Green in Culver City? To me, that's like a wonderful model of a medium-density, green, no cars on the property development. And it started out as affordable, so that might be something to look at. It's it's low, medium densities, like nothing's taller than three stories.
I I live about a half mile from there and one of our project team members lives there.
Oh, really? Wow, that's cool. It's a really neat place. It's actually a national monument, it's not just on the national register, it's a monument. Cool, okay.
Any other questions? Sure. Go to.
Well, Jim said he had stuff he wanted to say.
No, no, I'm good. I said, thank you.
Okay.
Let's go to presentation of the update of the parks and recreation.
Long day.
Is somebody here?
That would be me. I might have to take off. Go ahead, have the kids alone at home. Thank you.
Thank you, thanks. Hi again, commissioners. Again, my name's Tony Lopez, I am the senior park planner. And just a little bit of background, I didn't share this on the last presentation, but now, because it's a little bit more definitely more in my wheelhouse when it comes to the sea. I come from practicing in the field of landscape architecture for the last eighteen years in the city of Los Angeles. I've worked on campus master plans, streetscape master plans, parks, mixed-use development landscapes, urban forestry projects, et cetera. And so last year, when I had the opportunity to join the city of Santa Monica, I took advantage of that because I was so much looking at the granular details of things. Unfortunately, in my history getting mixed up in the egos associated with design, I wanted to really start to take a look at what envisioning, helping the community kind of put into into practice what they really want for their city. So it's been quite a pleasure this last year, working with everyone in my department and the expanded departments and all the boards and commissions. And so that level of background has really made me enthusiastic in taking on this role as a senior park planner, looking at help, helping to form the vision for the parks in the future. So today, what we're going to talk about is what the Parks and Recreation Master Plan is. I'm sure it's been a long time since you've heard about the Park and Recreation Master Plan. We're going to get a little bit into the Park and Recreation Master Plan to date, the goals of the Park and Recreation Master Plan update, next step, and some initial feedback that you might have. Now, today, it's a short presentation, I'm not presenting the whole, any of the master plan update. This is just more of an informative presentation to let you know this process is underway. And I will be back in the summer to do a more robust presentation about the actual update with the hopes of the the plan going to council in the fall. So the Park and Recreation Master Plan is a long-term strategic plan that responds to today's physical conditions, community needs, values, and opportunities associated with our open space network. It offers a vision for the evolution of our park network through the study of improvements, expansion, and acquisition. And as Jerry mentioned earlier on in public comment, you know, our parks need a vision. The last time our Park and Recreation Master Plan was updated was nineteen ninety-seven. These plans are typically twenty to twenty to thirty-year updates, and we're coming up right on that thirty-year mark. So the nineteen ninety-seven plan's vision was city as park. And the the goal of that plan was to look to enliven the street network as a connectivity green tissue that connected all of our open spaces. So part of this master plan update will establish the new vision for our park network moving forward. Who uses the Park and Recreation Master Plan? The community uses it, planners use it, architects use it, and the commission uses it as well. Now, the community uses the Park and Recreation Master Plan as a tool to identify the open spaces opportunities that they have expressed concern over in this outreach process and as a way to benchmark kind of where they are currently within their city and what the city is providing for them in terms of their open space and the program associated with the open space. Planners use it to evaluate the potential to amplify complete neighborhoods, providing park acreage to meet the need relative to the population growth. Architects use the Park and Rec Master Plan as a way to develop comprehensive plans associated with projects that they're working on within the city. How they develop a project to complement the existing network in such a way that their project ties in seamlessly with the rest of the network, but also finds ways to add perhaps what's missing. And the planning commission uses it to evaluate and calibrate the impacts of new development relative to the carrying capacity of our existing park network. I'll get into a little bit of the outreach I've done since I've started this process this past year, but what we're, I am hearing a lot from the community is that they're very much aware that the city's growing, it will continue to grow, and they already are noticing that the parks aren't growing at the same rate. So having the ability to correlate growth with growth of open space is very critical and already on their minds. The Park and Rec Master Plan timeline, so the nineteen, in nineteen ninety-seven, our open space element was adopted. That same year, the first Park and Rec Master Plan was adopted and has not been updated since. In twenty sixteen, LA County conducted a county-wide needs assessment that determined the park need for all the various cities within the county. In twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen, public outreach was conducted within the city of Santa Monica for what they were planning to be their Park and Rec Master Plan update in twenty twenty. In twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, the Park and Rec Needs Assessment Report was published and a draft master plan was created. Unfortunately, in twenty twenty, that draft master plan was set to be presented to the public in March of twenty twenty. And we all know what happened then. The project was put on hold, and it wasn't until I came on board in April of last year with the sole intent of taking that Park and Rec Master Plan to the finish line. So starting in September of last year, I've been working with a, the R, an RPC, Rec and Park Commission ad hoc group, looking at the past open space element, the master plan, the draft master plan, the needs assessment, correlating information I've gathered from all of the city's plans and reports and initiatives to create a new version of that master plan update internally. So I'm the one who's taking all that on. And so I felt it the best way for me as a new employee in the city to be ingrained with the commissions and boards in such a way that I can hear from the people who are actually making this decisions in the city, to inform this process rather than go through another step of coordinating with a consultant and kind of, kind of daisy chain that information. I really wanted to take this as an opportunity to like hear, participate, reach out to the community, and really become engaged in this process. In summer of twenty twenty-five, the hope is to be back in boards and commissions throughout the summer to present the update and be very deliberate about the content of that of that master plan update that relates most to those commissions and boards, while giving them a broad overview of the update and vision. And with the hopes of in fall of twenty twenty-five, presenting that to council with the commission's, board's, neighborhood organization, organization support. So again, nineteen ninety-seven, the open space element, this is a quote from that document, directed towards improving the character and quality of the city's existing open spaces and adding to its future inventory through reuse of public lands, redefinition of streets, and transportation corridors, and acquisition of private parcels in key locations. These are, these are elements of the open space element that drove the nineteen ninety-seven Parks and Recreation Master Plan, which noted that the city as park is advanced as a fundamental theme, having major implications on the role of the street environment to meet the recreational needs of residents and visitors. And as I mentioned, that looked at city as park and the connective tissue. What it also looked at in nineteen ninety-seven was growing the park acreage from, at that time, it was about a hundred and thirteen acres. In that plan's vision, the goal was to get somewhere between a hundred and forty and a hundred and seventy park acres. Currently, where we stand is a hundred and forty-four acres. So we hit that benchmark, but now, as we come up with this new update, what's the vision that we're going to look back on in twenty twenty-five years and say, we did that? That's what we want to do with this new update. Again, why now more than ever? Park and Rec Master Plan is typically, again, a twenty to thirty-year vision. COVID nineteen really reinforced the reliance on the park network and the open space network, not only from a social standpoint, but from a resiliency standpoint and the opportunity to utilize open spaces as the community bridge between the home and the community in those types of situations. Again, the community sees the city's growth and its effect on the carrying capacity of our existing parks. And per the LA County Needs Assessment, there are locations and neighborhoods within the city of Santa Monica that are park poor. Now, the county-wide assessment defines Santa Monica overall as moderate, but again, that that classification is based on several factors. When we look at the mapping, here, this is pulled from that needs assessment. You can see the yellow, the red, the orange, those are all those areas within the city that are park poor or moderate. And so that distribution of that open space shifts. And so there are neighborhoods, again, that are very park poor, although some of, most of them are very close to existing parks. Now, based on that needs assessment, the county-wide average is three point three park acres per one thousand residents. When this assessment was done in twenty sixteen, Santa Monica was at one point four park acres per one thousand. So you can see that from a county-wide average perspective, we're not quite there. So you can see that from a countywide average perspective, we're not quite there yet. And so we need to be looking at ways to expand and, uh, acquire new land where possible.
Could I just have a question? Um, is the yellow area the most park poor?
It's the red. You could see it's kind of in that Wilmont zone.
Yeah. Because I think we don't overlook the fact that thirty-five percent of the cities are one with single-family homes and front yards and backyards.
So that's the, that's the balance where, uh, we have to take into consideration because, uh, there is the level of, those neighborhoods have, are really walkable. They have great streetscapes, robust urban canopy. So there's that balance there and have, finding the opportunities to, again, expand where it makes the most sense and acquire new lands when those opportunities arise.
Another quick question, is this map based on current need or is it projected based on the planning horizon?
So this was based on the twenty sixteen moment in time, and I'll get into some, uh, some more information that'll add to that question. So, uh, the twenty nineteen needs assessment had highlight, had, had done a robust outreach to the community from which eight strategies emerged that would help guide that current master plan update, which never saw the light of day due to the pandemic. Those eight strategies, uh, sorry, those eight strategies, um, were utilized in this last year as we created the new update, uh, alongside some other city initiatives and strategies to find a way to kind of pare down that list because some of these strategies now overlap with most recent council priorities. So there was some overlap of initiatives that were blanket initiatives that covered any kind of city initiative, any kind of city plan, report, like, um, sustainability. This, these strategies really looked at increasing green infrastructure. So strategies that correlate with existing initiatives, we're trying to find a way to kind of remove those since they are, they do apply citywide. Now, back to the question about the, um, the, the level of need. So one of the missing components that we discovered in this last year in this update process was that we know we need to expand our parks, we know we need to grow acreage, but by how much? What are, like, what's the deliberate metric that's going to guide us moving forward? So what we have been working on, uh, with the Recreation and Arts Department is a Community Recreation and Arts Needs Assessment. Now, that needs assessment is, uh, using a statistically, uh, valid survey along with a general population survey, so two types of surveys. Uh, and that will evaluate our current level of service by not only our park network and amenities, but also our park program. So it will take our current inventory, our projected population growth, the feedback of those surveys to understand what people are using, where they're using them, what they don't have opportunity to use because we don't offer enough of it, and tell us, we need X number more of this, we need more of this, and we need more of this. So that way, it'll help us determine, when someone says, we need twenty new baseball fields. Well, no, based on the survey of what we have now, based on our projected growth and what we want to do as a city, we need six more. And so that way, we can make more responsible decisions in terms of how we prioritize new amenities within our park network. So we're not just adding things because we think that's a good number to add. We're adding that because the data is telling us this is what we need to add.
Tony, I have a question.
Yes.
Why the hell are we building a great park when we need parks all over the city? I'm sorry.
No problem. So the goal, the goals of the update are to reinforce and be in alignment with the objectives that, uh, noted in the open space element. It's also to respond to city council priorities, create an action plan addressing the goals of the open space element. Now, what we really wanted to do with this, um, with this update was create a strategy that has some accountability to it. Not just say, let's expand our open space. Well, how are we going to do that? In what manner are we going to do that? So what we've established is an action plan matrix that says, if we're going to expand open space, these are recommendations on how to do that. They are studies, um, there's plans, there are, um, exercises in creating documents and presentations and metrics that allow us to evaluate the potential opportunities to achieve that. So at any given time, when grant funding comes up, when development impact fees hit, we have those documents and those plans and those strategies already prepared or in the process of being prepared so we can make those decisions more quickly and have the numbers associated with those opportunities at hand so we know exactly what we need to ask for and when we need to ask for it. It also connects the community to existing citywide plans and initiatives. The other thing that we've integrated, started to integrate is a correlation between the master plan and those actions and how they relate to other plans and documents already adopted by the cities so that there is no confusion about what the action is asking. That we don't want to make sustainability suggestions that already are mentioned in the cap or differ in some respect to the cap. We want to point readers to the Park and Rec Master Plan to the cap so that these, these documents start to communicate with one another effectively so that there's, oh, Climate Action Adaptation Plan. And it also establishes a sense of accountability to whoever is using the Park and Rec Master Plan from the point of view of a consultant who comes on board to, say, develop a new design for a park. They look at that Park and Rec Master Plan, that Park and Rec Master Plan points them to all these other documents, so they have to be accountable for the knowledge within that master plan and the other plans that it points to. This master plan also promotes community engagement. There is a, uh, a companion narrative within this update that will talk about community outreach and a lot of what we heard tonight, and really expanding the robust nature of the outreach in such a way that looks at when the community outreach occurs, how often it occurs, um, in what typologies does it occur, to utilize as many outlets to gain more community, community feedback and transparency in this process. And again, it's just, it's to establish a new vision. You know, city as park, we did that. We grew to a hundred and forty-four acres, but what's next? We need to start to think about how all of our current initiatives and plans work together to tell anybody who's developing or thinking about developing or expanding or acquiring new land, what exactly we want as a city to reflect our identity. Again, we took those eight strategies that were pulled from the needs assessment, paired them with the council priorities, um, the most recent council priorities, and found ways to, uh, be a little bit more comprehensive about what they're really asking for. And we've, uh, instead of eight, we now have five with the understanding that three of those original eight are now, since the twenty eighteen, nineteen needs assessment, are now citywide initiatives. So they don't necessarily need to be reinforced in the Park and Rec Master Plan because they've already been adopted as citywide initiatives. This is a, a sample of the action plans that you will see in the update as it becomes more developed and presented to you back in, uh, in the summer. They're all based on principles, five strategies, and actions. So the principles are essentially the high-level network-wide vision. The five strategies are the ways in which we identify the authenticity of the principle. So those are the five strategies that are, were pulled from the twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen needs assessment. And the actions are the, the literal things that we're going to do to achieve that principle. And within that action, there are sub-actions that are, uh, let's say, for example, we want to grow our community garden network. Action one point one will be, um, establish quarterly outreach to the community garden advisory council to understand their needs. Uh, another action, sub-action might be hold annual, uh, program at the community gardens to celebrate, uh, yearly accomplishments. So you can understand that there's a broader action and sub-actions that help to, again, establish that accountability so that it isn't just a high-level great idea. Uh, this is, uh, uh, some of the lists of the citywide plans and initiatives that are being referenced in the update currently. Um, these are also citywide plans and initiatives that I have read through all of them, including the loose, uh, all few hundred pages of it. Uh, so this is, again, this is all about the accountability that this document will have for anybody who uses it so that they can understand that this is just a piece of the puzzle when it comes to Santa Monica, that this is about the open space network that is linked to all these other different initiatives, the Bike and Pet Action Plan, Sustainable City Plan, everything, uh, that we've, uh, coordinated as a city and a community to really reinforce our city identity. Outreach engagement thus far, so, again, back in September, uh, the Rec and Park Commission ad hoc began to meet monthly. Uh, previously, it was about, at, in that twenty twenty, um, uh, master plan update process, it was every few months they met. So we've really amped that up to meet monthly. Recreation and, uh, Park Commission ad hocks ran through February of this past year, so February twenty-five. So five, six months of back and forth with, uh, the commission. Uh, I've met with the Arts Commission, Field Sports Advisory Committee, Santa Monica Aquatics Advisory Committee, Public Landscape, Community Gardens Advisory Committee, and I've met with all seven neighborhood organizations, um, all to gather that community input. Uh, this is all to complement the outreach that had occurred in twenty eighteen and nineteen, but also, again, as I mentioned, this is all about me becoming ingrained in the city. And in addition to that, as I mentioned, the Community Recreation Arts Needs Assessment is taking what was done in twenty eighteen and nineteen as the outreach and amplifying that even more to really get a data-driven approach to what our park network needs. Again, establishing a vision, as this plan would be a vision for the future of our network, no particular projects are referenced. Instead, these are about studies and opportunities for feasibility of future projects relative to space, cost, and time. So within this document, you're not going to see add this at this park or add that at that park. It's all about studying the opportunities to integrate this component in the network in some fashion because we don't want to be so specific about a particular project where this master plan becomes about the project within the master plan because it sends us down a whole different EIR sequel prices that we don't want to go down. The next steps, um, I, again, I'm meeting with you today for feedback. I am meeting with Sustainability Commission next week, week and a half from now. Uh, I have my last stop with Urban Forestry at the end of the month. Uh, again, I've met with all the neighborhood organizations, various other commissions and boards. Um, and the hope is that, uh, before, uh, the start of summer, I could take this additional feedback that I'm gathering and roll it into this update so that it can be presented throughout the summer, again, to all these boards and commissions for final round of comments so we can have a solid final draft that goes to council for adoption in the fall. So with that, um, I have some questions, um, and this is, uh, more to, this is, your answer is combined with the comment that you might have, uh, from my presentation. But what stands out to you about our existing open space network that speaks to the identity of our city? How might open space be a louder voice in conversations regarding the growth of our city? And when considering our existing open space network, what do you envision for its future?
Just quick, quickly, um, I'm a strong supporter of neighborhood parks. Um, I live across the street from Ashland Park, and, and for me, that is, is just a wonderful amenity on my street. And it's also very safe and easy to patrol, well-lit, um, clean. It's just, you know, smaller parks are easier to do all that. So that, I mean, I don't know, I, single-family lots are very expensive, so I'm not sure how that could happen citywide. This was actually dedicated to the city, this property. But it's, it's great, I mean, you know, kids use it, dogs use it, it's, it's a really wonderful amenity. So my preference is small parks.
Thank you.
I'm, thank you for this. I'm, I'm thinking about, there was a conversation about affordable housing, um, some time ago, and, um, Mike Soloff had this, the, this idea that the city should simply have continually open RFPs to say, hey, if you have an idea for a, you know, for, for, for a building, um, come and pitch it to us, right? Here are, here are the specs, here's what we want at any given site. Is there a way to get more granular like that here? I mean, we have needed a park in the Wilmont area for as long as I can remember. I mean, I, I think we, I had a conversation at the Social Services Commission, a presentation from, from former Parks Commission Chair Phil Brock back in like twenty fifteen, um, where we were talking about the need for a park in Wilmont, and we still don't have one ten years later.
First Street.
Uh, further north, uh, sort of, um, closer to, closer to Montana around, I think there was a, there was a potential, like Nineteenth Street-esque. But anyway, um, why not, in the network, spec out a series of locations or a series of characteristics and put that menu out there so that if somebody, if a large developer is coming in to Santa Monica thinking about, I mean, who knows if we're going to have DAs in the future, but whatever those projects look like where there is some kind of community benefit as part of the project, where somebody says, hey, you could, you could make this park happen as, as a benefit, and they could go to that menu and see what's asked for and evaluate whether it's an offer they want to make or an offer they want to make in concert with somebody else who wants to do a project around the same time. I think these strategies are terrific, and I think that having a vision for where we want to be is important. But I also think we've got to get specific and say, we want an Ashland-size park somewhere in this five-block radius that has these and these amenities because these are the kinds of uses that the community wants there. If you're coming into our city to try to do a project, if you can make that happen, you know, we're really interested in your ideas. And, and get that granular so that it, it doesn't stay at the thirty-thousand-foot level. Yeah.
Tony, I just wanted to say, I know other people want to speak. I really appreciate your presentation and what you're doing.
Thank you.
It's very important for this city. I think the spread-out parks is really more important than neighborhoods. I'm, I mean, I've expressed myself, people know my feelings about the airport and all of that stuff, and so, but I just wanted to tell you. Your presentations tonight have been superb.
Thank you.
Yeah, Tony, thank you so much. Just a couple of questions, I know we're running, it's running late. What's the status of the Memorial Park, uh, rehabilitation? Uh, and there's a big master plan, when are we going to break ground on that?
Break ground? I can confirm with Linda, uh, we are actually presenting, she's actually presenting the RPC on that timeline process next week. So what I can do is get that information, she has the specifics on when that starts because things have shifted a little bit with some EIR stuff that's come up in the last couple of months. So I can definitely get that. I think, I want to say break ground was two years because right now, they just, we just had the kickoff for schematic design a week ago. So the goal was, like, with this shift in the EIR, it kind of shifted the rest of the schedule, so I just have to confirm back.
So you're thinking about, about two years off from now, okay? Do we have money to pay for that yet? Is money in the bank for that?
There is, there is some money, yes. And we are also in the process of trying to get another grant to, uh, offset some of the other costs. Remind me of that.
I, I did have a question about the beach. What, how does the beach factor into your parks plan?
So, um, that's a really great question. So when it comes to, uh, it's a great question that has some different nuance to it. So I will start with, typically, any city that is adjacent to a beach, the beach is not counted in the open space calculation because it's, it'll excuse the evaluation relative to landlocked cities. So it's quantified, but it's not included in the, the green open space network as a park. So the, the, because, primarily because the beach is owned by the state and we operate it. So there's a little bit of nuance in there too. Now, when it comes to what's happening at the beach, um, one of the other things I have been tasked to do, work on, is the beach master plan. So that is something that is, there's some money issues in terms of the, the amount of money we have to do that. But because, I have presented the opportunity because of how successful this internalized process has been with the Park and Rec Master Plan that I could harness those relationships and kind of move the needle on that master plan in some respects in terms of developing some, uh, plans and studies that are called out in the land, in the Park and Rec Master Plan to help move, uh, the study in that beach master plan and work with, start to work with the beach crew on establishing kind of what's happening with that.
Okay. So it's, it's, it's part of, it's under your purview, it's just, doesn't show up in the beach, the parks plan, you have a, a beach plan to activate, what the city can do to activate that space for recreational uses.
Yes, and so the, it, there, it is mentioned in the, it will be mentioned in the Park and Recreation Master Plan update as its own, um, action. And I have already start to outline the sub-actions related to that primary action of establish a beach master plan that would include, like, these are the things that need to be included in that beach master plan. So essentially, a, a rough order of magnitude of the scope of that beach master plan so that there is some guiding principles in terms of how that would get developed in correlation with the Park and Rec Master Plan.
Okay.
Okay. Um, one of the elements of the 1997 plan was, uh, a redefinition of our streets, uh, thinking of the city as a park, uh, and the role of the street environment to meet the recreational needs of residents and visitors, which I really like. Um, and it reminds me, um, of, I, I've traveled frequently to the Bay Area, uh, and a lot of the cities up there, particularly Berkeley, have done a really good job in dedicating streets as bike, bike streets, and vehicles can still, uh, drive on those streets, it's accessible for emergency vehicles and things like that, but there's a lot of design elements within those streets that really favor, uh, bikes and make it, and you see kids and families and, and people, all the, you know, just regular citizens riding their bikes through these streets. They have, you know, these small little, these are residential streets that I'm sure were lightly used, um, you know, prior to becoming a bike street, but, you know, they have, um, roundabouts in each of the intersections that honestly give a lot of opportunity for trees and other native, uh, growth and vegetation, but it also slows down cars, but very easy for bikes to maneuver around. And I, I really do think that, like, I would love to have a lot of parks, a lot of small parks, a lot of big parks throughout the city. On a practical level, it's expensive, and we do have this existing network of streets, and I would like to see a parks plan that, and a lot of people use, oh, I love open space, my, my child, my kid just played a baseball game at Clover Park tonight, uh, we, we, we go to these parks, but a lot of, you know, everyday recreation is when you want to walk the dog, or ride your bike around the neighborhood, and just enjoy your community and see your friends. Having one street per neighborhood that is a bike street, um, I think expands the idea of what we think of as parks, that street can become park-like in the, in its ability to, or availability of our residents to use it as a recreational space. Um, I think of streets, you know, like San Vicente and, um, I'm blanking, Olympic?
Olympic.
That have the medians, I mean, that, that space can be activated. Right now, it's hard to use those medians because of automobile traffic is so, you know, dangerous all around it, but to think of those spaces and all these opportunities that we have, um, to create a park-like environment within this existing city grid, um, seems to be, um, a economical middle ground to, uh, trying to create bigger open space parks. That's just some feedback.
Thank you, and I, um, what I, what was interesting is that this idea of a park street, I, one of the subactions I was looking at was, uh, working, I think the verbiage was something along the lines of working with neighborhood organizations to identify opportunities to establish streets that can be closed on a regular basis for open space.
Yeah, well, I will say, yeah, I don't mean to close the street.
Yeah, more permanent, yeah.
Yeah, keep the street of, you, you can still drive on that street, it's just a very inconvenient, slow drive.
It's a slow, yeah, it's a slow roll, yeah.
There's other, there's other streets that you can use if you need to, I mean, but that street is, you know, vehicles can access it for emergency, you know, use and things like that, but it's, it's not, it, you, you wouldn't choose to drive on that street.
Yeah.
Yeah. You would choose to bike or walk on that street. Yeah.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Um, a couple of comments and then one question. I wanted to reiterate my support as well for this idea of pocket parks, smaller parks who are distributed throughout the city, which I think is much needed, and particularly with regard to some of the areas that your maps are already showing as being high need or very high need areas. Uh, but I also want to express support for the idea of creative ways to make that happen, since that can be difficult, uh, whether it's through trying to engage the private sector in various ways, maybe through things like credits for park impact fees for publicly accessible, open space onsite, things like that. Really interested in seeing strategies associated with that. And then my question, today we saw a lot of discussion about housing versus open spaces, sort of competing priorities, and it's kind of interesting that you can't have one without the other, and they both feed on each other, and I'm sort of curious on how the parks master plan is going to deal with the interaction and relationship with the housing element and the next cycle of it, and to get them more aligned, you know, because clearly there are some aspects of it that seem to be in conflict right now.
Yeah, um, I think that's a really great question, because it's something that I've, coming from my particular background, I dealt a lot with, um, developers who are coming into a city and are wanting to build five-over-two or towers, I mean, I'm speaking specifically to downtown Los Angeles, where I've done a lot of these high tower works, projects. And, you know, a lot of it starts with documents like this update that define what we're talking about here tonight of, like, what is our vision for the growth of the city, you know, like, what happens when that building touches the ground, or what portion of that building doesn't touch the ground that creates these areas that are usable and not just open space to say, we checked the box of providing a little plaza for the public, done. But really instilling in the document such that, yeah, we have an inventory of the amenities within this neighborhood, but what I've also been working on is, what are the amenities that we currently offer that we don't have in this neighborhood but will fit? So that when we say a developer comes in and wants to do something in whatever neighborhood, they have to look at this document and say, you know what, we could integrate this amenity on the ground floor within the plaza, or within a community room that the public can use during these hours, that offsets the need for this amenity within this particular neighborhood. So, again, having that level of service needs assessment, having a, an inventory that not only accounts for what we have, but what we can, at a high level, fit, will help guide the process of reviewing those projects in a way that is, uh, responsible and provides the opportunity for us to say, you know what, based on this document, we need this in that neighborhood, it looks to me that you have the same amount of real estate that you're not using, or you're just creating hardscape area, but this neighborhood is really lacking that, what was the, the phrase was, the everyday recreation space. Why don't we make that an everyday recreation space? And so having those, those opportunities outlined as a way to strategically speak to, um, those, that integration will be really critical.
Couple of comments and question. Do you know, or a question first, do you know how much money, we have a open space development fee, do you know what's in there? How much money's in there?
The park and rec impact fee?
Yeah.
Yeah, so a, after the, this past year's reporting, there's about 600 and change K left. Um, the, the, the way the reporting is done, it's a little bit complex to understand, because you might, you might read it and say, oh, we have four million in there, but the 600 is, the, there's money in there that's already allotted for projects that are underway or about to be underway, or are in the process of being worked on, so the money's spoken for. So when you remove that, it's about, I think it's like 605K. Um, there's projected amounts that are coming in with developments that are anticipated to be complete this year, and I think it's about a million and a half.
Good, so in either, either way you look at it, that's not a lot of money when you're building, when you're building parks. Um, so that, it's just a challenge to try to find the money to do it and the land to do it. I would say, you know, you, one of your questions on here is, what stands out to you about the existence of our open space network that speaks to the identity of the city? My involvement with, with Little League, and to a lesser degree, AYSO, people came to our, when we would do tournaments here, or when we traveled elsewhere, people would say, your fields are so nice compared to ours. So, we maintain our parks to a very high degree, so that really speaks to me. Um, so I wish we could, you know, try to expand this throughout the city, and I also agree that we need to have parks throughout the city. I don't know how we're going to find it in that midtown area that we're, we're, where it's in the red. It seems to me the only thing we have an option for is doing some kind of transfer of development rights somewhere, and, you know, I don't, that's, that's a big, that's a huge task, but we do have 200 acres of land that is, needs to be, that, that we have some redevelopment opportunities with, and so maybe there's a way to do some transfer of development rights. But overall, I'm, I'm skeptical, and I will say, a couple of my experiences really revolve around Bergamot. We, when we started the Bergamot master planning and to, I remember exactly when it was, was after the, the loose, we talked about how we were going to create a lot of open space in that, in that area, and it became pretty quickly understood that private developers weren't going to give us their land for open space, and we couldn't take it from them. And so then the staff started focusing this on, well, it's really the streets where we're going to have open space, and it was kind of a, it was kind of disappointing that it, it came to that. And, so I guess I caution you not to oversell how much we can actually accomplish here, um, because that was a case where I think that the community was pretty disappointed with us as a commission, that we couldn't come up with more open space. And then we see it again in a few, you know, in the last year and a half, we've tried to create objective design standards where we get open space is one of the things we hold on to, but we heard one of the, you know, major representatives in the city who represents a lot of applicants saying, well, that just doesn't really work for us, and we'll just, we'll just waive or incentivize our way around it. So again, there's just, it's a struggle. What I really liked, I liked what I heard from Commissioner, um, Hamilton tonight, is let's repurpose streets, because we have control of those.
Mm-hmm.
And that's what, the only things I can think of is repurposing the streets, or doing some kind of transfer of development rights for, on larger properties elsewhere. That's my input to you.
You know, we could upzone the airport to like MUB, and then sell the air rights. We'd make a fortune.
Well, you could, or you could do some kind of a transfer where there's a land transfer, right? You can build your, you can build housing here if you can donate land to us in, in the heart of the city.
Yeah.
But, you know, it's, you, you have a, a tough task ahead of you, um, to get more, find more park land.
Well, I mean, from, my, my focus really in my history has always been design and finding great solutions to design problems. Uh, we, our big design problem is we don't have enough park space, so it's a tough task, but it's something I'm eager to continue to work on, and again, that's what this master plan update is about, is about having not only accountability for everyone outside of the city, but me too, being like, okay, what am I doing today? I'm going to tackle this, or at least start this thing, and find out who I need to talk to to start to facilitate this process, so that we can start to find these solutions. And again, at some point, some point in time, we have something that we can reference, not only the master plan, but these other documents that come out of it as part of that accountability to say, oh, didn't we talk about that already? Why don't we bring up that document that we were discussing about, what are the opportunities to close streets, where are they? And we have that ready.
Well, that, I mean, I, I think that's a good idea, but I guess it, it just brings back another thought in my head, you were talking about downtown, I also did a lot of entitlement work in the downtown area. I saw a lot of buildings go up, I mean, I entitled, and we saw them go up, but we don't see a lot of parks in the downtown area, and the city of LA, you know, in 2005 or 2006, they had $120 million in park fees, and they still couldn't, you know, accomplish that, accomplish the goal of creating more parks down there.
Yeah, and something else I, what, sorry to, to labor the conversation, I hope it's not too long.
Sorry, I, I went, I kept going, so.
No, no, uh, it's interesting, because, you know, something I latched on to in the, I think it was the 97 plan, was even back then, they understood that, you know, because of the beach and Santa Monica Mountains and city of LA adjacent, we're, we are landlocked in our, our version of landlocked in that sense, and so, in that plan, almost 30 years ago, it spoke to, we're going to run out of space, and so we need to also be available and open to understanding what are our opportunities to reinvigorate the existing parks we have. So it's maybe looking to infuse more program, infuse more amenities, restructure some things a bit, and, like, I don't know, maybe it's add, uh, another, like a small tot lot, or a, a couple picnic tables at Ashland, or something like that, you know? Thinking about how we start to, okay, well, we've had a good base, now how do we make it even better? Well, we're also trying to find these other opportunities in things like closing streets or improving the connections.
I, and now I'm belaboring it, but another thing we talked about in the past was capping the freeway and creating green space on the freeway.
And let's not remind me of the federal conversation and the grants that.
Did you, did you, did you lose your grant? Because I, I lost mine.
The, um, the kickoff keeps getting kicked month by month by month by month.
Don't, don't count on it.
I read an article yesterday that.
Yeah, no, it's gone, it's gone.
So.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Well, let me know if you get it.
Tony, do you have more, you have more presentation?
That's all.
If there's no more questions?
Not right now, uh, I will continue on my path forward, and I will schedule something in the summer, and you will be back, there will be a distribution of the update, uh, beforehand, so you can see it and digest it, and then I will come to present it and have more questions.
Since there are no continued items, and there are no staff items?
Because I've been doing some research on this, um, something to bring to the city's attention and the, our legislative advocacy team. Um, state law sets the minimum, maximum, maximum, minimum, whatever. Uh, ADU rear and side setbacks cannot exceed four feet. Zone zero is five feet.
What's zone zero?
Zone zero is now the clearance that, um, the state is beginning to ask us to ensure between buildings and any neighboring shrubbery.
Because of fire?
Because of fire. We have a part of the city that was under evacuation in January, where I think ADUs are in production. I am very concerned, I had in, uh, some informal conversations with experts about this, I am actually very concerned that homeowners who build ADUs to the four-foot setback could find themselves with, um, difficult-to-insure, uh, ADUs, because they will not control the fifth foot of zone zero, because it'll literally be in their neighbor's yard.
Wow.
Um, so I want to flag that for staff, I also want to flag that for legislative advocacy, because those really need to be aligned. I mean, I would argue for five feet, but, um, that conversation needs to happen, or we're going to get some real problems with ADUs and insurance and general safety. And I've seen properties where that's a problem, or, like, potential.
Steven Anderson's.
I mean, yeah, so I just want to flag that, that zone zero and set, ADU setbacks need to, to be, to talk to each other.
Me too.
If there are no other questions, it's now 10:08?
Yep.
And adjourn the meeting?
Fantastic.